I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for February 11th, 2019. And I'll call upon Councilmember Mark McGough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I invite all in attendance to join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Kristen Rush, if you'll do a roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Proton Maria.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
We're good. Approval of the minutes, any changes or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, they will stand approved as submitted. At this point, we'll have a three-minute public comment portion on items that are not on the agenda, and specifically, if you're here to give us your questions during the workshop on the waste hauler, please save those until then. So is there anybody who would like to address City Council on other items at this time? Seeing none, I'll close that public comment portion, and we'll open it up for some new business. We've got a resolution. It's Resolution 19023, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the City and County of Denver for delegation and participation in the Metro Mortgage Assistance Plus program. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a program that's offered by the City and County of Denver in partnership with the Metro Mayor's Caucus, and it involves the commitment to the Metro Mortgage Assistance Plus program with some changes from what was done last year. Last year, we did participate in this program, and there's some changes that are being contemplated. The city's commitment is the use of the private activity bonding authority, which allows for mortgage revenue bonds to assist Arvada's first-time buyers as part of this program. The city has participated in a variety of mortgage revenue bonds and issues in cooperation with metro jurisdictions over the years, and that has occurred through the Metro Mayor's Caucus in order to provide affordable fixed-rate mortgage financing. The City and County of Denver have studied the market, housing market, and they've proposed some changes that we are in agreement with. So, for example, they're providing down payment assistance grants, offering them at different levels of down payment assistance, greater and broader lender outreach to boost the program, and the inclusion of credit unions and small regional banks into the lender pool. So our feeling is, given the fact that affordable housing is an issue in our metropolitan area and in Arvada as well, we're recommending approval of the resolution and the continued participation in this program as stated in the resolution.
Very good. Open it up for, first of all, I'll ask a question. There's no financial commitment by the city. This is just using our bonding authority to be able to assist first-time homebuyers, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Mr. McGough.
Yes, I'm wondering, Mr. Devon, what is the role of our housing office? And does they process applications? Is that the role that the housing authority or housing office has here in the city?
In most cases, they would be referring to the City and County of Denver, who actually does the processing of applications, but it would be another tool, another resource in the quiver, if you will, another arrow in the quiver for the Housing Authority to help people get into affordable housing.
So the Housing Authority would be a point of contact for somebody here.
Correct.
But then the reference, the referral would be to Denver.
If a client needed some assistance, we would provide that. If not, then primarily it would be a referral.
Just to have time, I think it's worthwhile making note of the number of loans that we have participated in over this period of time. When it's like, what was it, 70?
Seventy-one loans.
Seventy-one loans that, so...
A little over $16 million.
Right. So we have assisted 71 through this process, and I think, as was pointed out in the staff notes, it also addresses some of our concerns about affordable housing by using this mechanism to help get people into their first homes.
Ms. Ford.
Mr. Devon, so I can understand, looking at the, at a glance, review, it talks about the borrower eligibility. Is this, are these, I should say, is this criteria true for these loans? That the borrower does not have to be a first-time homebuyer and can own other property?
That's true.
Okay. Thank you.
Ed, do you agree?
Yes.
Okay. He was coming up to the mic to answer the question.
Oh, I didn't see that.
No, that is correct. Basically, this is proposed that you don't have to be a first-time homebuyer.
Oh, okay.
But there is an income limit to child material participation.
Great. Good. Okay, Ms. Ford, any other question? Okay. And are we going to be able to promote this through our website and social media and all that good stuff?
Yes.
Get the word out to folks?
Right.
So, you know, obviously, we've had a lot of discussion here, particularly in the last little bit, in terms of how can we get people into homes? And this is, I think, a good program for that. Mr. McGough?
If there are no other questions, I'll be prepared to make a motion.
You may make your motion.
Okay. I move that R-19-023, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the City and County of Denver for delegation and participation in the Metro Mortgage Assistance Plus program be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes cast. That passes six to one with Ms. Ford voting no. Next, we have ordinance on first reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 19-006, an ordinance authorizing an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between Apex Parks and Recreation District and the City of Arvada relating to stormwater discharges associated with municipal separate storm sewer systems, general permit, and also Council Bill 19-007, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Wheat Ridge and the City of Arvada regarding roadway improvements in Wheat Ridge Ward Station area, both be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and public hearings set for March 4th, 2019 at 6:00, I think that should be 15:00 PM.
Motion's for approval on first reading. That passes seven to zero. Okay, we've got a couple of minutes here before we can start our public hearings. We've changed our agenda a little bit tonight. We don't typically have workshops and public hearings on the same night, but tonight we do, and we decided to move the public hearings ahead of our workshop discussion because we anticipate that the workshop discussion might go on a little bit longer. But let me talk about the workshops that were the, primarily the workshop that most folks are interested in tonight, which is the Waste Hauler Options Discussion. So as we go into this project in terms of a discussion, you know, I want to sort of give you some sense of where we are and where we intend to get to. The agenda for tonight, as it comes up for this workshop, is that we'll be getting an update from staff. Staff will make a presentation to us about the efforts to develop a project to explore our waste hauling options. I want to make it very clear that we have not made any decisions. We won't make a decision tonight. I think the only decision that we have made is that we want to have the discussion, and we want to engage our citizens, and we want to ask questions, and we want to come up with the right answers as to whatever direction we're going to go with waste hauling in the city. We're very early in the process yet. It's for some, like Ms. Miller up here, she'd like us to move much more speed than we move, but she will learn that sometimes government doesn't move as quickly, is not as nimble as the private sector, and sometimes that's good and sometimes it's bad. But the bottom line is, for this City Council, we want to get it right. Some of us, both Mr. McGough and I, were here in 2011 when we did it wrong. Our discussion was not good. It wasn't healthy from any perspective in terms of the right way to go through the process to reach a decision. And this time, we want to get it right and make that decision. So what we want to do tonight, we don't normally take public input during workshops. It's an opportunity for council and staff to engage back and forth, but this is an important issue for us. And as such, for tonight, what I'm going to do is open it up for questions from the audience. You can each come up, and I've got some folks who have signed up already, and you can certainly still sign up. But I'm not looking for, are you in favor of it? We're not looking for, are you opposed to it? That's not what the purpose is tonight. The purpose tonight is to ask questions so that we can have as many questions out there that we're going to submit as part of the process to the trash haulers, to our staff, and to other communities. Lakewood's looking at this right now. Westminster's looked at it to some extent. We want to get the right questions out there and get them answered. And so that's what we're going to ask from you tonight. So I will open it up after we've had staff presentations, some council questions. I'm going to open it up to the audience to be able to come up and ask your questions, and we'll get your questions down. We're not going to answer them tonight. We're not in a position to be able to provide answers tonight, but you will have the opportunity to ask the question, and we will get you the answers. Because those are the questions we need to be hearing and that we need to get answered so that we do the right thing with how we're going to do this. So when we get to that part of the agenda here fairly shortly, I don't think our public hearings are going to be too lengthy tonight, it'll give us an opportunity to get those questions in. And then the future steps in this is, and one of the big questions that everyone has is, well, is it going to cost me more money, cost me less money? Is it going to, am I going to get better service? Am I going to get worse service? Those are all questions that we're going to need to put into a request for proposal from the industry to get their input as to the feasibility of making any kind of changes to the way it's been traditionally here in Arvada, or, you know, should we, you know, we need to know what the cost-benefit analysis is. You know, is it truly going to save people money? Are we truly going to get better recycling rates? Are we truly going to get better service? We need to get the industry's input as to the best way to address those kind of issues so that we can properly decide how to move forward. And one of the questions we're going to have to answer at some juncture, not tonight, is, is this something this City Council's going to decide, or is this something that we think that we need to get an advisory question to our citizens and have our citizens, you know, vote up or down as to whether or not to recommend the City Council take this kind of action? So there's a lot of steps that'll still be happening. There'll be plenty of opportunity for public input. You will have your day, what I like to call your day in court, where you can come here and tell us why we're absolutely crazy for thinking about doing this, or why we would be crazy not to do it, you know? And we all know that the seven of us up here are pretty crazy, so even though you tell us that we are, it will just be a reaffirmation. So, but we want to get your input. We want to have plenty of opportunities. We're going to have it available on our Speak Up Arvada site. We're going to have it available through all the different platforms that we have here at the city for you to be able to give input to us. So with that, I have now used up enough time that I can open the public hearing. And I opened the public hearing on Council Bill 19004, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along West 72nd Avenue, generally from Swadley Court to Kipling Street, and along Oak Street, generally from Parfay Street to West 72nd Avenue, for the construction of street, sidewalk, utility, drainage, railroad grade separation, underpass, and/or related improvements as part of the West 72nd Avenue from Kipling Street to Sim Street, Project Number 18ST30. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this project includes the reconstruction of West 72nd Avenue from Kipling Street west to Sim Street, from the existing two-lane configuration to a four-lane arterial parkway, and then including the reconstruction of the Sim Street intersection and a new grade separation underpass at the Union Pacific Railroad on West 72nd Avenue, slightly west of the, where the properties are located. The acquisition of the right-of-way is necessary to facilitate the construction of the project. Includes the fee simple right-of-way permanent easements and temporary construction easements. The size, extent, and type of right-of-way needs for each impacted property is still in the process of being defined as we complete the design progress for the project. We've had interaction with the property owners on the north side of West 72nd Avenue. We've kept them fully informed of the progress. We actually had meetings with them back in the summer prior to the vote, public vote, in fact, actually prior to even the council placing the item on the ballot, because we didn't want anyone to be surprised by that action. We've had continued communication with them following the public vote back in November, and we've actually, not too long ago, sent a letter under my signature to the property owners, keeping them informed of the council's consideration of this ordinance. This is a project which we plan to be very respectful of the property rights of the property owners, work with them closely in the process of the acquisition. This ordinance enables us to get that process started, which is why we wanted to actually have it introduced a couple of weeks ago at the January 28th meeting and then presented here tonight. So therefore, we're recommending approval of the ordinance, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and open it up for City Council question or action. Mr. McGough.
Yes, I have a question just for clarification. Perhaps it's my misunderstanding or whatever, but in our particular recommendation for action and in the suggestive motion, we talk about from Swadley Court to Kipling Street, and in the first page of the exhibits that are shown here, it shows the point of beginning being at Union Street, and I'm just wondering, I just want to make sure that we're all set there, that there's not a discrepancy between the exhibit and the language.
No, that's correct. We are, we base the limits on the maximum extent we possibly thought we would need to go, but the intention is to go no further than Swadley Court.
Okay, so there's not a discrepancy or between the exhibit and the narrative?
No.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure. Thank you.
I see no other questions. Mr. Jones.
Sorry. A quick question, and this is, again, more of maybe a housekeeping question. I got an email today from someone who saw something on the Internet, which sometimes it's not necessarily true. The question that we asked, 3F, did it specifically indicate the number of properties that were going to be involved in land acquisition or what have you?
Are you talking about the ballot question?
Yes.
I don't recall the ballot, the ballot question did not describe properties.
Yeah, because, I mean, as you look at this stretch from Swadley to Kipling, there are a lot of properties impacted for a number of different reasons, over 100, if you look at the documents. But those easements and those negotiations have to happen with essentially all of those property owners, because we may need access, whether it be an easement access or what have you. So it's not necessary that we're negotiating to take land and houses from 104 people.
No.
Yeah. So that was the miscommunication that someone posted out on the Internet, and I got an email about it. I just wanted to clarify that that's not the case. So just for the record, could we have somebody explain exactly what those easements are going to be used for?
So we have, we will obtain temporary construction easements and permanent easements from not necessarily all properties. We have to go through the design process in order to evaluate exactly what we need. We do, you know, as you said, that there are well over 100 properties who potentially might be impacted, but we don't necessarily need easements from every single one of them. And like, you know, some we might need access for storage of materials, some we might need access just to, you know, modify fences and things like that. So those decisions have not been made yet. It's specifically just, we're at the very beginning of that process right now.
Thank you for the clarification.
Ms. Ford.
I'll make a motion if there are no other questions.
You may.
I move that CB 19-004, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along West 72nd Avenue, generally from Swadley Court to Kipling Street and along Oak Street, generally from Parfay Street to West 72nd Ave, for the construction of street, sidewalk, utility, drainage, railroad grade separation, the underpass, and/or related improvements as part of the West 72nd Avenue from Kipling Street to Sim Street, Project Number 18ST30, be approved on final reading numbered 4675 and ordered published by title only.
All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. You know, I felt comfortable, and I know this council feels comfortable voting for this, knowing that our staff is going to work very diligently with those homeowners to try to get them the best solution possible. We don't take lightly the fact of having to acquire people's homes, but this is a project that the good to the overall community justified it, and I know that those homeowners who are being adversely affected will be treated appropriately by our city. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 19005, an ordinance amending Section 98-70 exempt sales and Section 98-78 exemptions of Article III Sales and Use Tax of Chapter 98, taxation of the Arvada City Code pertaining to agreements to effectuate exemptions. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this ordinance is associated with the fact that manufacturing businesses have been provided an exemption from sales tax and use tax collection for manufacturing components and shipping materials that are used to produce and ship goods for wholesale sale pursuant to our city code. And many manufacturers are changing their business models for various reasons in order to sell direct-to-retail rather than wholesale. As a result, this has created some conflicts and some situations where manufacturing businesses, which would otherwise be eligible for this limited exemption from the taxes, are no longer eligible because they now manufacture for retail, predominantly for retail sale. So in some cases, it may be appropriate for the city to consider to grant a manufacturer a continued limited exemption from the taxes irrespective of their manufacturer's methods of sale. And what this ordinance does is it allows the city manager to enter into agreements with individual businesses to grant a limited exemption from the taxes, provided that such agreements are reported to the City Council. There's another part of that whole process wherein the city manager would be required to review with the city attorney and the director of finance the reasons for potential exemption, and part of the communication to the City Council, if the city manager is going to recommend an exemption, would be to reference the fact that the situation has been vetted fully with the city attorney and the director of finance. The city attorney, because the city attorney is the legal expert, and the director of finance, of course, is the expert on tax codes and how the tax codes are applied. This is a matter that has created some situations with manufacturers who came here with the idea that they're providing primary jobs, and in the course of the alterations and changes to their business models are now being affected by the potential losses, loss of this exemption. So those are the kinds of facts that we would consider in looking at whether or not we would grant these exemptions. Therefore, and, you know, again, if we do decide to grant these exemptions, we would report them to the City Council, and certainly your feedback would be provided back to me as your feedback is frequently provided back to me as part of this process. So therefore, we're recommending approval of the ordinance and would be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and open it up for City Council questions or actions. Mr. Jones, you're first.
I don't have any questions, but I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. McGough?
Yes, I did have a question. In the staff papers, the discussion, the first sentence there indicates, "In addition to the proposed ordinance revision, staff has prepared a policy setting forth the criteria." I'm just wondering, that's not part of the packet. At what point will that, those criteria be shared with the council? You just indicated some of them, but I'm assuming we're talking about a written policy?
We would, assuming the council approves this ordinance, we will put a policy together and get it to you within the next 60 days or less.
Okay, and then will that be, will that be an administrative policy then, or would you envision it being a council policy?
Administrative policy is what we would envision.
Okay, that sounds right to me, too. Thank you.
Very good. We've developed, I think it's a written policy, that we no longer have unwritten policies in the City of Arvada, so. Mr. Jones, you may make your motion.
Thank you. I move that Council Bill 19-005, an ordinance amending Section 98-70 exempt sales and Section 98-78 exemptions of Article III Sales and Use Tax of Chapter 98, taxation of the Arvada City Code pertaining to agreements to effectuate exemptions, be approved on final reading numbered 4676 and ordered published by title only.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. I think it was important that staff put in those checks and balances. Yes, we certainly trust our city manager, but we certainly like to have a lot of sets of eyes, look at these things, and give input, so I think it's a good way to go. So good work. Okay, next, we're going to have a workshop. We've got the Tree Line Sketch Plan, which is the northeast corner of West 86 Parkway and Indiana Street.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have Planner John Moore to introduce this item. We have a presentation, a slide presentation to review the Tree Line Sketch Plan.
So for the audience, let me explain sort of what Sketch Plan Review is for us. We recognize that there are projects that are going to come to us that we need to give some input back to our staff and to the potential developers of project as to whether or not we think these kind of projects are feasible before they get too far down the road in terms of going through Planning Commission, in terms of going to City Council. It's very expensive and time-consuming for the development community to bring projects to us, and so this gives everyone an opportunity to sort of get a sense of the lay of the land. It also gives City Council an opportunity to give some input, and it sort of gives some first exposure to our citizens as to something that may be coming up later on that they'll certainly have the opportunity to testify about at both Planning Commission and City Council. So we have these presentations made by staff rather than the developer because we want to keep it as non-biased as possible, just to sort of get, here's the facts, ma'am, of what we're looking at, and then we'll be giving some input and guidance back to staff and to the potential developer of projects. So with that, tell us what you've got.
Thank you. I'm Jonathan Moore with the planning and vision of the Community Economic Development Department, and I know everyone's a little bit anxious to talk about some waste hauling options later, so I'm going to do my best to keep this brief and not reiterate everything that was in the staff report, but make sure to present enough information that everyone can have a good conversation this evening. And please feel free to interrupt me with any questions you may have as I go through the presentation. As the outline shows, we'll run through the process real quick and reiterate what the mayor just mentioned as far as the process, running through the site context, the total applications required, the couple of policy questions that we're really looking on feedback for tonight, and then get into a little more detail about the proposal, the conceptual review staff provided, and then summarize everything that we've seen. So to kick it off, again, as the mayor mentioned, that this is a general conceptual site plan. Not a ton of super detailed work has been done yet, so at that level, again, not too many details as far as utilities and road layouts and things like that. Comments are certainly... as utilities and road layouts and things like that. Comments are certainly feel free to be shared with staff and general comments made to the developer, but as staff, I'll be answering any questions or potentially other staff members this evening. As far as the context, the site is located on the western portion of the Village of Five Parks neighborhood at the intersection of West 86th Parkway and Indiana Streets in northwestern Arvada. Again, this is the arterial street section that will be the northeast corner of West 86th Parkway and Indiana Streets. As you can kind of see, it's located at two arterials and about 6 mile, .6 miles south of Candellus Parkway where some significant commercial development is currently ongoing. One of the big issues with this site then that is kind of generating this conversation this evening is the topography of the site. As you can kind of see in anyone who's traveled along Indiana Street, this is just north of West 86th Parkway looking south. There's a significant drop-off from about West 86th Parkway to the north. In total, it's about a 70, 75-foot elevation difference. Again, some different contexts where you can kind of see, standing on the site, you're actually looking above the residences of Whisper Creek, Three at Wild Grass, and then standing on the southern part of the site, you can just see the top of Prestige Preschool looking to the south in that photo on the right. And just this afternoon, the potential applicants also submitted another just kind of cut diagram that was not previously included in the presentation when I was at the council, but felt it was important to show just how significant that great change is and how residential development in particular can kind of take advantage of some of that topography change. As far as the comprehensive plan, it's currently zoned mixed-use as well as parcel to the south and most of the parcels to the west of Indiana Streets. The surrounding context tends to be suburban residential, which has a maximum density of five dwelling units per acre. This parcel is mixed, as mixed-use would require a minimum density of 12 dwelling units per acre should residential be developed there. However, as you can see, currently the property is zoned, planned unit development, business professional, which precludes any residential development, is intended for commercial, and both this parcel and the parcel immediately to the south on West 86th Parkway was kind of always envisioned as commercial properties from when this, when Village of Five Parks as a whole was annexed into the city and zoned and designated for future land use, along with several other properties along the Indiana Corridor. As some additional backgrounds, many properties, and in total about 35 acres, along the Indiana Corridor have been rezoned and re-designated from general mixed-use or commercial uses to more residential. As we've seen, the market has not really kept up with some of the city's future land use and future ambitions of the Indiana Parkway. Just a side note, as well as mentioned in the staff report, the property to the south of West 86th Parkway currently has an active development application in process to also seek a rezoning from PUD BP to PUD BPR in order to add some residential component to commercial. That should be coming before, that is scheduled to go before Planning Commission next Tuesday and will be coming before city council in mid-March. So I just want to put that on your radar, that this is, this sketch plan before you today is not unique in that there are a handful of properties that have sought to change from commercial to residential, and there's one active in the way. As far as the outline development plan, as I mentioned earlier, this is part of the Village of Five Parks overall plan. The parcel that we're talking about is highlighted in the upper left-hand part of the screen. Both that and the parcel immediately to the south in the lower-left part of the screen were always envisioned as kind of a commercial neighborhood center for the Village of Five Parks. The Village of Five Parks as a whole, again, was annexed in 1987 under West Point subdivision, later renamed Leander Parks, later renamed to currently Village of Five Parks. As we've seen, it's been a little more than 30 years since this was annexed and brought into the city, and no commercial development has occurred on either of those parcels. Just kind of, again, going to the point that this has been a challenging site, both of those have been challenging sites.
How long have there been homes out there? It's been...
The first homes, I believe, were early 2000. The Village of Five Parks itself was established in early 2000, 2002-ish, and then obviously, some of the plans have changed over time. Probably the most recent or most significant is PAF Planning Area, which is the second over from the lower right, from PAH in the lower left, that originally had been envisioned for much higher density. I believe it was envisioned for 18 dwelling units per acre for townhomes. That plan was approved just prior to the 2008 recession, and it got all the way through the process. The recession occurred, and then it went silent for a couple of years. I believe the developer actually went out of business, and then they came back several years later and developed the current properties there, which are much lower density. And that's, again, the kind of, that outline development plan always called for much higher intensive uses along Indiana Street and then tapering off to lower density, more single-family as you move towards Alkier to the east. As far as the applications that would be required as part of this, it would be the comprehensive plan amendment, which would take the current mixed-use and change it likely to a mixed-use residential emphasis, which requires nine dwelling units per acre, and also calls for mix of housings, potential commercial uses, but really focuses on more mix of housing options. Rezoning from PUD BP to either PUD BPR or PUD R for residential to add that residential component. Outline development plan amendment to change it from the current designation, which is commercial office, to residential and a preliminary development plan. The subdivision process would likely take place administratively as the current proposal anticipates rental product, which would not require individual plating of all the homes, but rather creating three lots, which would be a minor subdivision and administrative process. As far as the policy questions, we're hoping to have a discussion about tonight. The two main ones, and the really primary one, is the proposed change of land use from a commercial designation to residential, if city council feels that this would be an appropriate change, given the current market conditions, what we've seen along the Indiana Corridor and what's been occurring in the Candellus development area. And then also, if the proposed density is appropriate, given that the current mixed-use designation calls for 12 dwelling units per acre, while also the surrounding suburban residential context typically comes in about five dwelling units per acre. As far as the actual proposal, calls for about 82 units, 21 detached single-family homes, 62 attached row homes, coming in just over nine dwelling units per acre. Sciences range from about 1,200 to 1,700 square feet. One of the unique things about this is that developer is looking to provide about 60% three-bedroom units, which they've identified as a lacking product in the Arvada area, and so they're really looking to tap into that. On top of it being a rental product, which I believe his council saw in a demographic presentation last month, that about 73% of housing products in the city are ownership, whereas only about 26 are rental. So again, this is kind of tapping into a market that is not really seen throughout the city and particularly in this area of the city. Some of the amenities that we'll see in the site plan are clubhouse, fitness, pool, playground, dog park, and things like that. And again, just getting back to the rental model, all of the residents will be prescreened, require credit, criminal checks, and overall will be a very well-maintained and highly-managed property. And really, the target audience that they're going for here is older retired couples that are looking to downsize or right-size their homes, and then also families that are looking to move into the neighborhood that may not be able to afford some of the housing in the area, but really want to be part of a community, want to be part of the school district and incorporate themselves into this area. And while they save up for it, a down payment can actually live and be part of the community here. So again, kind of identifying a need that is not necessarily found in this area of the city. As far as the site plan goes, staff has reviewed this as well as the Arvada Fire Protection District, and has kind of checked off all of our preliminary concerns. Parking is being provided at 2.2 spaces per unit. There's two points of access. As you can see, the right-in, right-out along Indiana Avenue on the north of the screen, there'd be some shared access with Prestige Preschool off of West 86th Parkway. That intersection will likely be signalized, along with which this development, as well as development to the south, will be responsible for contributing to and designing and constructing. Roadway improvements along Indiana Street will be required as typical, which would extend the trail that you can see on the map along Indiana, along the Indiana Corridor. There's also plentiful internal pedestrian pathways and trails, as well as a trail connection on the east side, on the right side of the map that's up currently, that will connect up to the regional trail that runs along the site. Just want to highlight one, again, important aspect of the design, is the placement. There's a mix of townhomes and single-family homes. The single-family homes have typically been presented at the edge of the site to kind of mirror the context of the local single-family residential homes. The townhomes have been placed more internally, the kind of two exceptions that, one is on the upper right-hand part of the screen, which is adjacent to open space, so there's not really any single-family homes that would be interfered with there. And similar, the other townhomes on the very north of the site, top of the screen, that are set back at least 50 to 60 feet from the adjacent Whisper Creek Three homes, which staff feels is an appropriate buffer there and would, again, not impact the adjacent homes. Just some quick examples of the architectural elevations that are provided. Pretty standard, three-story, again, not asking for any height exceptions or anything like that, that would fit into the neighborhood. This would be the single-family home. This would be for the row homes that, again, would kind of, would be able to take advantage of some of the elevation and topography being provided here. The top image you can see is a standard two-story home, flip arounds, and you can see the garage would be kind of a tuck-under garage that would, again, take advantage of that elevation change. And again, views from the cul-de-sac area of the plan. Again, just want to mention, it doesn't turn up terribly well on the screen, but the site topography, the high point you can see is in the lower-left part of the screen, which is the intersection of Indiana and West 86th Parkway, and kind of tapers as you go northeast down about 75 feet, which is where the detention pond is proposed to be located. Utility plan simply showing that the utilities are possible to be laid out, checks all of our basic design criteria. There is one significant part of this site which requires potential off-site detention that would tie into the Whisper Creek development to the north that the applicant and staff have been working together with to provide an adequate solution to. As far as the conceptual review, again, wanted to point out the surrounding context of single-family homes and the development. The proposal for nine dwelling units per acre, staff feels would be appropriate, again, meeting the intention of the outline development plan, calling for higher intensity along Indiana and then tapering off as you come in. And the placement and design of the single-family homes and townhomes would feel to be appropriate to get adequate density required to make the project work while also protecting some of the single-family homes in the area. Just want to point out, I won't go through all of these bullets, but there are several pieces of the comprehensive plan that this project would hit, primarily compatible infill, again, making sure that the density is appropriate and contextual, and the mix of housing stock and housing types in the area. As far as the current market is concerned, in total, there's about 200 acres of commercial property along Indiana and Candellus Parkway that are available for developments. So far, only about 10% has been developed to date. Site topography of this site in particular makes commercial development incredibly difficult. Again, that 70-foot change really limits the amount of commercial viability. In some areas, if you were to have a larger box store or several buildings, it could require up to a 50-foot retaining wall just to make parking and make site layout work. And something, just additional kind of background for this site, again, it was annexed in about 87. In 2016 was the first activity we saw in it when Prestige Preschool came in. At the same time, church was looking to potentially develop the site, which could take advantage of that topography and potentially have a larger footprint, and also have kind of a walkout patio area as the site slopes down. Neither of those are necessarily commercial uses, and unfortunately, the church decided to develop elsewhere. But to date, there really hasn't been much of a commercial interest in the site. And as far as the actual housing product is concerned, there's certainly always demand for attainable housing in the region, particularly rental property. This project would certainly hit on that. And again, as previously mentioned, about 35 acres have been rezoned in the area from commercial to residential, so this project is not unique in that aspect. This is just a map showing the general, everything in red is the general area where commercial is zoned or potentially anticipated for in the future or currently active. The blue site represents this development site. So there certainly is in the area, I know the city and staff is certainly always interested in trying to protect our commercial zoning to provide viable commercial uses. This map just shows that there are certainly plenty of properties in the area that are for more viable commercial uses. So in summary, if council members have any questions as far as the change from commercial residential use or any questions about the density, I'm happy to answer any of those.
Okay, Ms. Ford, you're first.
Mr. Devon, the map that we just saw where it showed the commercial areas, and we, I understand we have a study coming up that is looking at commercial. Is it including that area? Does it include that area?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, Jonathan, you talked about big-box stores, and I've heard this before. Do we talk about anything other than just big-box stores? Do we talk about centers that include, you know, lots of other different types of services that people need, like, I don't know, card stores? There's a lot of, lot of services that we need.
Absolutely. And the example of big-box stores was just a quick example I was throwing out, but certainly smaller footprint would be possible, although when you're looking at a single-family home versus commercial, probably smaller, commercial site, as far as building footprint, is still going to be about 5,000 square feet, which, once you start factoring in placing several of those buildings plus parking on a site with topography that's challenging, it is simply much more challenging to develop on top of some of the other issues that the site has, just as far as access off of Indiana and West 86th. The right-in, right-out only on Indiana Street is one example that typically, again, commercial sites, you want to have much greater variety ability for access onto the site than this has.
Sure. And Mr. Devon, one other question. When we originally did the outline development plan for this area, and it came back as a great spot for light industrial and commercial uses, was the land as it is today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Jonathan, I had a question on the garages. I see that this project includes single garages. Do we know how many single garages are in this project?
There are, there are garages for each unit, so there's 82 units total, so there'll be 82 garages in addition to guest parking locations.
Are those two-car garages or single?
I believe they're two-car garages.
Well, I see, it says one and two-car garages, but it doesn't identify the number of one-car garages. It just says will feature one and two-car enclosed garages.
I believe the, so the parking provided is two spaces per unit. And I believe two-car garages will be provided for the single-family, one-car garages for the townhomes with guest parking in addition to that.
Okay, that I would have a problem with, because I currently live in a unit with a one-car garage. Very difficult for anybody who, other than a single person, and I do know people who are single in my complex who have two cars, never mind visitors. You mentioned this project as being potentially attainable. Do you have any idea what rent would go for, for 1,200 to 1,700 square foot residents?
At this time, we don't. This is, again, still more of a conceptual site plan, so we don't know exactly, but what we do know is that we'll be tying into the rental market, which, again, there's, is not a significant amount of in the city.
And then, if we were to have attainable housing in this area, do we have transportation services, such as bus services, in this area that would provide opportunities for people to not have as many cars, just say? that would provide opportunities for people to not have as many cars, just say?
At the current time, the closest RTD service, I believe, is on the eastern portion of Village of Five Parks along Alcoy Street. And it comes into the development just briefly, but it's still probably about a half-mile away from the closest. And as far as concerns about parking garage space and things like that, what I can say is in several discussions with the developers, they have mentioned that they are certainly willing to be flexible and provide, ensure that they're providing adequate parking. Again, I just want to emphasize that at this stage, this is a conceptual plan and the real intention that we're trying to have the discussion of whether or not the zoning is, or the rezoning would be appropriate. And any parking and garage space questions can certainly be addressed at the design stage and acknowledging that there is lacking transit services in this area, that there will certainly need to be adequate parking to, for residents living there.
Okay. Let me just make sure I have no other questions. Mr. Mayor, do we comment at this point or do we wait till the end?
Why don't we get all of our questions in and then we'll have you give some guidance on the two questions that they're looking for input on, if you're okay with that? Mr. Pfeifer?
Well, I wasn't just, I wasn't done yet. I just wanted to see. No, that's okay. Oh, I wanted to ask you, you mentioned this new application that had just been put in, and where was that again?
It was, if you'd like, I can run back to it, but it was in the, early on in the presentation, it was the...
Well, it shows on this, it's property just to the south, right?
Is it where the?
Oh, I apologize. The new, yes, the application, let's see.
It was there.
Just, it's the park ridge on the map that's currently up, just to the south.
And what was the percentage of residential versus commercial on that project?
I can't break it down by percentage, but, well, by acreage, it's just over five acres, commercial, just over five acres, residential. It'll be 66 residential units, paired townhomes, and then five commercial lots with generally retail uses.
Okay. And then, you mentioned that in terms of the commercial space that we have, we have currently 200 acres and only 10% has been developed. Have we been getting any interest in terms of commercial on that other 90%?
For some parts, the primary interest in commercial we've had is up at the Candelas commercial aspect, just about a half-mile north of here. And in some respects, the applicant did also submit a market study, the executive summary of which was provided as part of the council this evening, as part of the packet this evening. And part of it also reflects a little bit that the Candelas commercial development currently is taking up a little bit of the oxygen in the air for some other commercial that's further, further down. That area is a much more prime location for commercial services, given the level of development in that area.
Okay. I'm good for now.
Okay. Mr. Pfeifer?
So access off Indiana, so they're going to widen Indiana for us in this proposal?
They will provide the requisite expansion of Indiana that's required for any development there and basically matching the flow line that continues to the north along Indiana that Whisper Creek has also provided. So they will be putting in an acceleration-deceleration lane just north of West 86th Parkway in order to access and exit the site.
Okay, so from all the way from the intersection of 86th all the way down will be widened for the acceleration and deceleration? Including the corner?
From, from West 86th to the north
Correct.
Along Indiana Street.
So there'll be a whole new lane?
Essentially, yes.
And then, I struggle the access with this. So you're, we're sure that CDOT's okay with you coming down a hill like that and having, having that with that lane?
This has not, since, again, this is a preliminary kind of conceptual plan, CDOT has not reviewed this yet, but our internal traffic engineers have.
It's okay being that close to an intersection at those speeds?
It's, at the conceptual stage, our, our traffic engineers are comfortable. At the preliminary development plan, CDOT will get a review.
These will be questions I'll be asking the applicant. So it's probably, probably a good idea for them to get that figured out because I know it's preliminary, but I think speeds and an access to a neighborhood down a hill at 45, 50 miles per hour, 60, whatever speed they're going, is a little dangerous. Then also, knowing the density you're asking for, it worries me that there's a lot of cars going in and out of there. So moving into the density, I, I have a hard time where we had the zone as PUD, BP, and then you keep making the statement that we were going to create more density closer to Indiana, but yet, this map that's right in front of us clearly shows that that's not what happened and that's not what we're doing. So I would struggle with that type of density when it doesn't match the surrounding neighborhoods. And I'm not sure it falls as our infill. I see this is more spraw than infill. So I don't know if our infill rules or policies around that apply. So I'd look at this as spraw, which falls under a whole nother world for me. So I'd keep that in mind when you look at density. I would, I would probably lean towards a straight zone for residential on this just because I think that it matches the rest of the neighborhoods, which is what, five units per acre?
Correct.
Yeah. And if you look there, 3.87, 2.4, 3.7, 4.9. I like to have a harmonized neighborhood. And that, that might maybe pull stress off the access, getting off of Indiana when you have less, less folks going in there. And I'm sure, I'm guaranteed that the Village at Five Parks folks that are up on that hill, as soon as those three-story buildings pop up in their backyard, I'm sure that, that this place will be filled. So I think we probably should consider, don't go for the 35-foot or 33-foot midline. Probably think about lower would probably be a good thing. Then also the parking, when you go back to the parking picture or the zone, yeah, okay. Well, go the other way. One more. Oh, no, that's fine. So I know it's conceptual, but where's, oh, I see. The guest parking's kind of just the two spots here, two spots there, and two spots there. That's it. So about eight guest parking is what is thought of.
Total guest parking is 22, including spaces at the guest house.
At the guest house, way over on Indiana. Okay. Not near the townhomes where they all have one-car garages?
There is some dispersed parking there, and that is certainly a concern that would be addressed at the.
And how many handicap would they have to have? And where would those be?
I'm sorry, can you?
The handicap parking spots? I would assume that if you have only like two visitors here and there, I'm sure those are all gone because you have to have accessibility for those with disabilities.
Correct.
Parking probably needs to be probably a little bit more thought out if I was to give some feedback. I already told you about the zoning. I struggle with the suggestion of, you know, well, commercial's just not happening for 30 years. I, I think that the rodeo's been around a few times where residential flourishes, which is now cooling off, and then commercial starts heating up. And they're, they're on different cycles. Knowing that the residential's cooling off right now, I'd have a hard time taking that, that in as, well, it hasn't done anything for 30 years. Well, guess what? No one lived out there 30 years ago. I wouldn't build a 7-Eleven if nobody lived around me. Now, we have that happening. So I struggle with the zone rationale when, number one complaint we get out, out in this area is more services, restaurants, things to do. So, so I talked about the straight, oh, and then the other thing is, is if we keep eroding, because I think what, what happens here, and this is, this is a problem I'm starting to see happen, and Mark, Devon, maybe this is more for you, is I see that the staff comes for this one and one up north and one down south that we haven't even seen yet and we're just hearing about it, you know, kind of now. But there's always this element of removing commercial. So when we get this one-off saying, well, it's only one, but it's really actually three parcels. If I didn't keep all my marbles together, there's actually three parcels being talked about changing. So I want us to make sure we're not comprehensive, or that we're comprehensive that it's not just this parcel changing. It's actually, there's three of them being talked to be changed. So our commercial landscape is not just this whatever 35 acres. It's 100 acres or whatever we're talking about because there's three proposals out there right now. So I, I hope we get better at how do we get that comprehensively reviewed versus a one-off? Hopefully, I'm making myself clear.
You are making sense, Councilmember Pfeifer. What I think is important to understand is we don't necessarily dictate the timing of these presentations to the council. The applicants request to make a presentation to you, and so we're simply facilitating this presentation to you based on their request to have a, to have feedback from their projects.
Okay. Yeah, because if we keep saying, well, it's only, well, and this is what I'll say in general. If we keep saying, hey, it's just this one being converted, hey, it's just this one being converted. Well, next thing you know, 10 later, 10 have been converted and now we're, we didn't have commercial anymore. The one complaint that my family has is we keep building homes and homes and homes and homes and we never do anything else. And so services are big. I'd encourage that. Also, the water discussion. I didn't hear anything about the water discussion. Now, I don't know if that's tied into just the Candelas water issue, right? But there's no water issue by more lawns and everything else down here. So these folks, the water's fine? I see your head shaking, so, okay.
Yes. Yeah, this, this parcel is encompassing the current adequate water supply for the city.
So converting it from commercial or business commercial to residential, when there was how much of an increase in water consumption? That is completely fine. Right? Commercial, commercial use, commercial business use is a lot lower water use, right? Is that not true? And so when we convert it to residential, how much does it increase in water use? You, you mentioned it last week.
Right, it's approximately double. Now, when you look at the entire city, on the other hand, it's not, not a huge impact on our water supply.
And do we, but I get it, it's just, this, just this 35 acres, but do we ever project that the consumption of water, if we keep changing our commercial and business zones, that, that water consumption far exceeds our plan of what our current zones are?
I do keep an eye on our water supply.
I know you do. But you don't know if we change 100 acres to commercial, or from commercial to residential and that the water supply to 100 acres doubles? Doesn't, does, is there any fear, concerns around water?
In the water supply calculations, we do have water committed to redevelopment through the city. And part of that redevelopment is densification. And this would be a form of densification.
Well, this is greenfield, so to me, there's no infill or, you know, this is...
It's part of the overall infill of the city.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions.
Sure. And just to clarify a couple of numbers quickly. As far as the total acreage that has been converted from residential to commercial along the Indiana corridor and specifically, to date, it's been about 35 acres. This site is about eight acres that would convert.
Okay, okay, so it's 35, it's eight that we're talking about, got it?
Correct.
Thank you for the correction. Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. Taking a look at the slide that's in front of us, it's been confusing to me. At the top, which would be north, it appears that there are buildings there. What, what is to be depicted by those squares at the, at the top?
Sure, that is the, and a couple of those, you can at least see the foundations, if not more, but that, those are the residences for Wildgrass Three at Whisper Creek Development.
But they appear to be right immediately adjacent, yet there's a huge drop-off from the, from the north.
Correct. So the, the most significant drop-off, and again, it's a little difficult to see just as far as the lighting on the map, but on the lower left-hand side of the screen, you can see obviously that the lines are quite a bit closer together. And about halfway through the site, as you move north, those lines continue to stay pretty tightly together. As you move generally to the north and where the cul-de-sac is, the lines spread out a bit, which typically indicate more.
But they're not, they're not, those are not buildings or building sites that are immediately, immediately north of this proposed development?
Correct. It's, the, the land essentially flattens out very slightly at the very north of the site, excluding the eastern portion. But those houses are roughly, again, 60 feet away from, 60 feet or more away from the proposed development.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of not questions, just some observations that you might want to take a look at. I would be concerned about the, the trail that's shown along Indiana. It, you know, it has a start or stop point at the, at the southwest corner of the property on the south end there. And then on the north, it, you know, there's, there's a big change in elevation at the north, and it just kind of shows that the trail abruptly stops. So that's one I would ask that the applicant talk to us about if this comes forward further. Also, and whether the trail is going to connect over with Russell Park and how that connection is to the, Russell Park being immediately or pretty close to the east side here, right at the top of the, of the hill also. So I'd like to have that looked at and to talk about those trail connections and how that all kind of fits together. The other thing that, was just a quick note. It seems like the, the clubhouse location, little problem with that since it's way off in the corner where most of the users would be off to the other side. So that might be looked at. And finally, to your, to the question of whether we ought to make a change in the comprehensive plan and move from commercial to residential. One of the rationale, statements of rationale for converting is that if this were commercial, there's several reasons, but the one I want to point to is that it would only allow for a right-in, right-out, and that's not the best for a commercial property. That would seem to be the case for all the commercial up and down Indiana. Doesn't seem to be much place, if these should come forward in the future, that there's going to be anything other than right-in and right-out along Indiana, whether it's that next property south or the one further south than that. Wherever we are along Indiana, it's going to be right-in or right-out. So, you know, that's not a persuasive argument at all. But certainly the topography is to my mind. But I'd like to hear what other council members have to say about the, the comprehensive plan change and the rezoning before I kind of provide some direction.
Sure.
Thank you.
And I can also quickly address the, the trail connections. It's a little tough to tell from the site plan, but the, the trail along Indiana does connect into the existing trail of Wildgrass to the north. And it's a typical CDOT trail, street section that is shown. And it does, it will also connect down into the West 86th Parkway connection.
Well, that elevation change there has got to be 30 or 40 feet.
Yes, and there will certainly have to be some kind of design.
And there's a ravine drainage area at the base of that, so, okay. I'll just accept it, that will be connected.
Right. And, and as far as connecting to the park to the east, the trail connection you see on the right side of the screen on the east was, it, it's actually a dedicated easement as part of the plat and is planned as, as part of this development that will connect from West 86th Parkway up to the trail that connects to the park and then also continue north into our regional trail system. That's also an equestrian trail to the north.
Okay. Well, if the application comes forward in the future, that's one of the areas I'll be taking a look at too very carefully. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Jones?
Couple of questions. So I'm not an architect. I play architect on Monday nights, but I'm really better at color by number. But looking at the drawings, going back to the, the garages, I'm looking at the drawings and they look like two-car garages to me throughout, even in the, even in the ones that are kind of the townhome scenarios. So I think that's an important question to get clarified. Either I'm really bad at looking at pictures or... Those look like two-car garages to me. Again, scale, color by numbers for me. Okay, again, I'm just asking, just reiterating the question. And maybe they're double stacked. So I think that's just a good point of clarification. As far as the scale, and Mr. McGough brought this up. As far as the scale of this drawing to those houses that are in Whisper Creek filing, there's a bunch of gray boxes compared to the, to the darker gray boxes in this drawing. Is this to scale?
Excuse me. It is roughly to scale, again, keep in mind, this is conceptual.
I get that. And so those lots in the Whisper Creek filing, are those 5,000 to 6,000 square foot lots for one, for a single-family home? for one, for a single-family home? Are they a little bit bigger, maybe? I don't know.
To be honest, after I had a...
Well, I guess, I guess the point I'm trying to make here is, obviously, those are single-family homes, those are one...
Right.
One, one house on each lot, and you could fit, you know, maybe three of these single-family style homes in that same lot. So if, if in fact this were approved for a single, to the three to four dwelling units per acre, as Mr. Pfeiffer suggested, what would need to be done along that northern boundary, the furthest, kind of that sloping, in order for the same style of single-family home to be on that, across that line from east to west?
Right. Again, not, personally not being an engineer myself, it's tucked away in on exactly all the grading issues that would go into, into play there, but taking a look at it, I know this is something that the applicant has spent a considerable amount of time laying out the current proposals for single-family and townhome, to both take advantage of the topography, provide enough housing to make the project viable, while also being contextual to the surrounding neighborhoods. To provide a, a kind of standard lot size that you would see in the city, I think would pose significant challenges as far as laying out the street network and providing the number of units to actually make the project viable, kind of getting back to the topography of, you know, you can kind of see how they've laid it out in line with some of the more flat areas of the site. To readjust how that is to provide larger lots, you're talking about providing a certain number of backfill and grading to provide stable foundations for those homes. So unfortunately, I can't give you the specific detail, but it would, it would require a significant amount more grading and fill.
Can we go back to one of the very first slides that you said wasn't in the packet, but kind of shows the slope?
So it's generally, left side of the screen is the southern part of the site, as you move right, it moves more towards the north generally.
So to, to adjust for the, the lot fall, the grade, they're stepping down as opposed to building retaining walls?
Correct.
So, but there would be a retaining wall possibly on that farthest north side of, and that's what Mr. McGough was pointing out, I think.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for, for going back to that. With regard to the water consumption, given that this, you mentioned this is a professionally managed property, given that it's professionally managed, does that change the water usage as opposed to a single-family home? And I'm, I guess I'll look to Mr. Sullivan.
To be honest with you, the fact that it's professionally managed does help keep the water consumption down, because they're more aware of what they're, I guess they're just doing a better job of maintaining the landscaping. Again, I, I don't really know that you want to put water supply into your decisions here. This really gets complex when you start to say, we should have this type because it uses less water. I, I think your land use development decisions should really be made on other factors. I just...
No, I don't disagree with you. I guess my, my thought was that there could be a part of the conversation on landscaping. If, if we got to a, kind of a formal application, there could be a conversation around what kind of landscaping material would be appropriate to cut down on water consumption.
Absolutely. And staff does have those conversations with them.
Okay. And then, and, and Mr. Pfeiffer created all my questions. So with regard to CDOT, Indiana from 86th Parkway north is Jefferson County. I think CDOT has jurisdiction at the intersection, so would CDOT really need to provide approval on that deceleration lane in the right-in, right-out?
Thank you for bringing up, you're, you're correct on that, is CDOT jurisdiction would be south of the intersection and west of the intersection.
Okay, so we don't necessarily have to get CDOT's approval for that? Okay. I think those are all the questions I had for now, I'll hold my comments for another minute.
Great. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thanks for everybody asking good questions, you answered a bunch of mine, but I have a couple for you. So, and I think you had this in your presentation, but could you just reiterate when the ODP was developed?
The current ODP was developed in early 2000, and there, I can go through quick history, it was annexed in 87, and ODP for the West Point subdivision was created at that time. In the late 90s, it was created for Leander Parks, the current version was created in early 2000, which has since twice been amended, the most recent time in 2016.
Okay. And at, at the time, I guess I've participated in a couple of these ODP, and I think ODPs that we've done, sorry, Ms. Miller, Ms. Miller said to explain what an ODP is, the ODP is the outline development plan.
Correct.
And, and I know I've participated in a couple of these outline development plans that we've done on, on developments, and it seems like we gave great care to developing these outline development plans, they weren't very casually done, they were actually very carefully done. And so the, the, one of the, the questions I'd like to know is, you know, has enough changed in the world that the great care that I'm sure was given when this outline development plan was developed, has there been enough change in the world to where there's necessity for, for changing or amending this outline development plan? And, and do you, as the planning staff of the city, do you guys have any comment on that, or is that something for us to decide?
Sure, and it's, it's certainly something for council to decide at the time of formal application. As far as staff input, what I can say is, you're absolutely correct, that a great deal of time is spent creating these outline development plans, they're not something that are kind of slapped together and thrown in, and we really try to uphold the vision of them as, as we go forward, which of course is more difficult the longer the time span of the ODP is, simply because market conditions change. And what you raise is actually a, a great point for this, is, as I mentioned, the PAF parcel, which again, I wish it had a pointer, but it's not the most, leftern, south, leftern most parcel, but the one just adjacent to that, to the right. In the original ODP, called for townhomes and 18 dwelling units per acre, and so that was envisioned as a very high-density, very compact residential development, which then would have also helped the commercial viability of the adjacent parcels with the higher density adjacent to it. Again, when the recession hit, that plan was kind of scrapped and came back with the current of 4.9 dwelling units per acre. In this case, one could almost make the argument that that market condition changing has now impacted these adjacent commercial sites, because the original overall development plan called for a much greater density in the area. Now that you no longer have that density, it, it can be more difficult to support the adjacent commercial. So those kind of domino effect of market conditions changing over the decades that this has been in place certainly plays into some of the market viability that we're seeing today.
Makes some effect, okay. And, and the original outline development plan was quite big, this is just a very small part of the original outline development plan?
Correct.
And, and most of the outline development plan was developed as planned, correct?
Generally, yes, with, with the exception of what I just mentioned, everything else has been developed in approximate accordance to the original ODP.
Okay. Let me switch to a different subject here. I know this, this particular project as proposed to us in the sketch plan is for a rental development versus an ownership development, doesn't seem to me that for our considerations of the land use, that that has any bearing whatsoever. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Okay. And there wouldn't be anything about this development that would require that it stay one way versus the other way, that whoever owned it, I would assume, could sell all our pieces of it at any time they wanted, to anybody they wanted for, for residential use in any way?
The only challenge would be how the land is initially subdivided, where the, since, and again, no formal applications have been submitted, but currently, the plan is a rental product, so it would be subdivided ju, probably into about three lots, all under common ownership. In order to sell off any individual unit, that unit would have to be individually subdivided and sold off, and so if at some time in the future, it did want to change from a rental to individual ownership, the entire process would have to go through a major subdivision process, which would likely bring it back to a public forum to decide if that was appropriate at the time.
Okay. And, and a quick question for Mr. Sullivan, I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to be sure. If this type of development were developed as a rental product, each unit would still be required to have their own meter and water tap and separate utilities. We don't allow combined utilities for multiple units in this type of scenario anymore, is that correct?
The code really says that you have to have a separate, at least a separate connection into each building, but if you have multiple units in the building, you can have one meter and manifold each of the units.
Okay. So townhomes, a row of four townhomes?
They could have one meter...
Could have one meter?
Or they could have four meters, it's, it's the developer's choice.
Depending on how they want to do it. Okay. All right. One last thing to a, to a different subject, and this was just something you mentioned, I just want to be clear on this, you mentioned something about this can provide some attainable housing. There's nothing about this plan that is subsidized on the, on the developer's side, so they're not proposing any type of subsidies for their development or construction, nor are they proposing any type of restrictions on who can live here, or subsidies that they would bring or not bring. And so the reality is, this is just a market development and doesn't really have anything to do with anything attainable at all.
I would only say it's, it's attainable in the aspect of, it doesn't require a down payment for a mortgage to purchase a home, so it allows people that may not have that amount of money saved up to, to purchase their, their first home, the ability to live in a community that has similar community amenities.
But, but there's no restrictions on, on pricing one way or another?
Correct.
On, on what they can do. Okay, sounds good, I'll have, I'll have a statement to make here in a minute, once everybody gets their questions out. Thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer, one last shot in.
Hi, thank you, sir. Just clarity on the buses, because, you know, I, I think I could get along with the buses, but there's only four a day out there, two in the morning and two at night. So when we think about the parking ratio, they're all going to be driving, so single-car garages with a few parking spots, doesn't make sense, it would if there was true transit out there, or some sort of mass transit, but this is a small bus that, that's out there twice, you know, twice in the morning, twice. So let's keep that in mind when we're looking at that.
Yeah, and we absolutely agree, and as part of the design process, we will absolutely make sure that it's parked adequately.
Okay, I'll ask a couple of questions. On the, on the, and obviously, we don't have transportation counts or anything of that nature at this, traffic counts at this point, but one of our huge bottlenecks is that railroad monument there, the, the bridge, would there be a, a look at an opportunity for, you know, this project along with the other surrounding projects to help contribute to the cost of getting that bridge replaced and that part of Indiana widened?
Widening of the railroad bridge is a bit beyond the scope of this development in particular, if they were to be part of a, a larger metro district, that, that is something that could potentially be discussed, but tying it directly to this development, I believe would pose some potential challenges. As far as traffic counts, though, the applicant has submitted a preliminary traffic study with approximately 668 weekday daily trips, 50 during the morning peak hour and 61 during afternoon peak hour.
Why don't we, why don't we go to the two questions you want to get answered from us, and I'm just going to go down the row and get input from each council member as to what their thoughts are. Okay? So get your questions up here for us. Okay, Mr. McGough, you want to start?
At this point, basically, I think I just need to provide a response to the first of the questions, and that is that I haven't heard anything this evening that would, that is persuasive to say that we ought to change the land use and zoning from commercial to residential. I think some of the key words in your question there are, given current market conditions, I think we also have to take a look at potential future market conditions and how those might change. The, there's nothing at this point that impels the, the city to have this particular piece of property developed, I don't think we have the same sense of urgency that the developer might have, and so I'm just not persuaded that this is a proper change to make to this, this particular property.
And because of that, you don't need to get to the second question. Okay? Nancy?
I, I would concur with Mr. McGough. I, I too struggle with the idea of, of changing from commercial to residential. I do agree with Mr. Pfeiffer that, you know, right now, it is definitely a, a prime time to be developing residential, but I think that we need to give that area some time for the commercial, and I, what I'm afraid of is that we're going to be developing a lot of housing out there with no services, and we're going to be jamming our roads because residents have to go somewhere for those services, and right now, there's not much out there. So I, I'd be very concerned about that. If the development were to go forward, I wouldn't have a problem with the 12 dwelling units, or the nine-point, whatever it is, or units at this point, that would be a problem. But I, I, the problem that I have is with the lack of commercial out there, so...
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, I'm not persuaded either to change it from commercial to residential, just, you know, I get the market changes, but I know right now that's, there's a lot of activity out there, so I don't know if it's fair to say that it's a problem property when you go out there and you see all the commercials starting to build, and so I kind of feel a little bit different about that, plus knowing that we're going to have a Jefferson Parkway through there, we'll have more, more, you know, we need our, we need to create a sense of place, and to have a sense of place, you have to have places to go. So I don't think I have a need to answer the next question, so. One, one last statement, Mayor, before you move on. We put in a plan for what, how we shape our city, we put in a comprehensive plan in, we put zoning in, there's, there is a lot of thought that goes behind it, and there is a lot of, a picture of what we see the future. So I do think it, it's a little unfair to say current market conditions, because I think the decisions we make today impact 20 years from now and 10 years from now, so we have to be very, we have to be stewards of our city to, to protect what, what we believe, if we all have a crystal ball, which is difficult, what we believe would benefit our communities 50 years. So keep that in mind when you ask that question. Thank you.
So... Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I have a kind of similar thought. One that sticks out to me is the preschool that's there now becoming kind of orphaned here as the only thing that wouldn't be residential in this area. I guess I wouldn't be totally opposed to there being a residential component to the development of this piece property, but for this piece property to just become a residential development, at this point, I also don't think is necessarily appropriate. If a commercial development were to come along on this piece property that included a residential component, I, I think I'd look at that probably very differently than, than what this would be. So in, in the form presented to us, this, this just conceptual form that presented to us, doesn't, doesn't to me probably meet the standard or meet what would take to make a, a comprehensive plan amendment or, or a zoning change to allow that to happen, so I'd probably be averse to that. With regard to the density, I'd have a little trouble with the density too, given how low the density of the surrounding neighborhoods are, if it were higher than the surrounding neighborhoods, I'm okay, but when it's, you know, three, four times, two, three, four times what the surrounding density is, that also to me seems a little out of place to, to be doing this. So, I, I mean, I, I would love to see a commercial development here acknowledging that the topography may not allow this to be ideally commercially developed, but maybe a mixed development that has a residential component to it, to try to deal with some of that topography stuff, but I would expect the residential component to, to fit in with what's there already and not be dramatically, dramatically different, so that would be my feedback.
Right. Ms. Miller? Ms. Miller?
Thank you so much, sir. Shocking, I'm going to disagree with my fellow council members, but I love you. I think that the increase in population has driven the change in the market conditions. And I would support that we change this to residential instead of commercial, mostly because of the hill, too. You know, I'm thinking of all of the commercial developments that I have seen come to council in the last year, you know, from the Starbucks across the lake at 64th and McIntyre, and the headlights shining on the homes, all I can think of is the residents at the bottom of that hill looking up at this commercial building, and the parking, and the trees that are going to have to go in, and the buffers, and...
You don't have to worry about that, because that project went away.
Okay. I still have anxiety about it. So anyway, I just think in this little area, and I agree, we need commercial out there, and I agree, I lived out there, and we need that. But I think in this eight acres is not, it doesn't have to be commercial. I would love to see, like Mr. Marriott, some, you know, pads of restaurants or something small, I know with the landscape, that's hard. But I think the bottom of that hill, in my own opinion, should be residential with the neighbors that are going to look right into it. As far as the density question, I think that what you're proposing here is much too dense for that area.
Ms. Jones?
So I've done a lot of thinking about this, obviously, this is in District Four. I drive by this often. And I've seen, you know, I see it, and it's been undeveloped for the last 30 years, or however long that ODP was out there. And in general, I would agree with my colleagues, with the exception of Dot in this case. No, no, no. There's more. Because, you know, I will be one to advocate for keeping commercial, commercial, and residential, residential. Not because I think we need a bunch of six-story buildings for businesses, but for all the services that Ms. Ford was talking about, the dry cleaners, the liquor stores, the nail salons, which you find everywhere. But it's those kinds of services that are lacking in the area. As I've considered this particular site, it seems to me that any kind of commercial development, any kind of residential development, in a, kind of the standard, three to four dwelling units per acre, is going to be difficult. And someone's going to lose their sight view, someone's going to have somebody looking in their backyard, and we're going to have, it'll be an interesting hearing. I was, I struggled with this because, again, kind of keeping true to my commercial platform, this one, I think I would be okay with the change because of the topography. I don't, I don't believe that, you know, the market conditions are necessarily driving, you know, a residential developer to build. The reality is, and I think Mr. Pfeiffer said this, is that the reason why the commercial's not there is because there's not rooftops. Will this help, will these 164 units help the commercial to consider the space to the north? It's possible. But, you know, I would also argue that, you know, we're probably going to hear from staff in a report that they want to suggest that more residential be rezoned, you know, in commercial areas. And I would just remind my colleagues, when that comes up, to stay firm on your commercial position. Because I, again, I don't think that we need to give up all of our commercial spots. So for that purpose, not to prolong this any longer, in this case, and in this case only, would I be comfortable with this sketch? And to that end, I would be okay with the dwellings per acre.
Okay. My thoughts, you know, I worry about, when we have, and we've had this discussion, about having the bits and pieces of commercial coming to us as to, well, let's take this one out and make it residential. It's sort of the death by a thousand cuts. That's what I worry about. And at the same time, I hear Mr. Jones, and he's, and I've gone out and looked at this parcel. Well, first fact, that it's never developed, you know, we built all the homes out at Village at Five Parks. And the mentality was, you know, if you build it, then commercial will come. Well, commercial hasn't come. And we fought like heck to get the commercial that's finally happening in the heart of the Village at Five Parks. And it's turning out really cool, but it's taken a long, long time for that to happen. Then I look at the parcels down further south, where, you know, we had developers that wanted to convert them into residential, and we said no, and it is being developed as industrial commercial space. So, you know, at what point do you say, yes, we continue to land bank it and believe that at some point, our vision and our dream's going to come true? I struggle with the same thing Mr. Jones has with this particular parcel because of the topography. You know, the history of this is that the Storyline Church was going to go there, and the cost to build a 50-foot-tall retaining wall to get the site flat for the parking that you need for, you know, for the church, was, it just made it unfeasible to do it. So, and frankly, would I prefer, and I'm, they did a beautiful job converting the old Albertson's Walmart into a really beautiful church. I was there for their ribbon cutting, and it's a, it's a great facility of how they've taken that into a really nice use. But I would, frankly, I wouldn't have liked to have seen the church on this site, because it totally takes it out of tax base and takes it out of that benefit for the community. So, you know, would I rather see this than another church at that site? Probably. Would I love to see something creative in terms of some true mixed use of some residential with some commercial? Boy, if there's a way to do that, I'd love to see that. But fundamentally, because of the topography, and remember, there's that huge monument sign right there. So the whole Five Parks area has kind of blocked that off in some ways from being a really good commercial site. I'm more comfortable with it than some of my fellow council members, but I do worry about the death by a thousand cuts. And I don't know if there's a way that, and I know we're going to be getting a presentation from staff on the Tipideau Study that's going to tell us that we probably should give up some of this commercial property out there. And maybe the more appropriate time to have a discussion on this parcel is after we get that Tipideau input. And we can look at all these other properties comprehensively as, in terms of, you know, should they, should they stay? Do we have enough land for commercial or not? And sort of what's the, what's the point where we need to guarantee a certain acreage and certain lots, you know, we're going to hold firm and fast and not change? But there are parcels like this where it might make some justification to change. But I think we need more information before we can do that. So. And in terms of the density, you know, closer to Indiana, I'm more comfortable with the higher density than, it almost becomes that buffer between the residential, the purely traditional residential. And we want to have a variety of housing stock. And there aren't apartments, or many apartments, up in this area. It's been, it's, the thought of simply building a few mini mansions on this parcel does not appeal to me at all. So I like the density from a housing stock perspective. So I don't know that we've given the applicant, or potential applicant, much to chew on, or we've given him a lot to chew on, but we certainly haven't come down hard and fast with a endorsing yes, move forward, and we look forward to seeing you. So we'll see how it all plays out.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's do a quick stand and place, and then we'll do the last workshop.
Mr. Jones, if you'll rejoin us. Thank you. Okay. We'll reconvene our workshop. Thank you all for being patient while we had that other discussion. As you can see, these issues that come before city council are not easy, and there's lots of policy things we have to consider, and lots of interest between rights of everybody involved. And we're going to have that same discussion as it pertains to trash hauling. So let's begin.
Super. So, good evening, Mayor, members of council. I am here to continue a conversation around waste hauling options. So by way of background, you may recall that the Sustainability Committee was here on December 10th and gave a presentation with an overview of waste hauling as its current condition in Arvada, and then some of their recommendations for moving forward. And then council has asked staff for more information about what an implementation timeline could look like, what an RFP could entail, and a little more additional information. So I'll be providing that this evening. And again, as the mayor mentioned, nothing's been decided, and we're really just starting the conversation and looking for more input around this topic. So what would be helpful for council to provide some feedback on this evening is the proposed timeline, which is flexible at this point, some approaches to community engagement that we will propose, and then some of the specific project components that we will be asking the community about. Just kind of a reminder for everyone why we would be considering change to our waste hauling system as a community, looking to lower costs for residents and create some more equity across the city in terms of what folks are paying in rates, decreasing our road damage. Trash trucks, obviously, are some of the heaviest vehicles that are on our residential streets, decreasing our noise nuisance and air pollution, providing for some additional services, bulky item pickup that has been wildly popular in Arvada, increased recycling, composting, yard waste pickup, those kinds of things, increasing safety on our streets and in our neighborhoods, and improving our diversion rates, our recycling rates for Arvada. Again, just kind of a reminder where some of this has stemmed from and why the Sustainability Committee has done quite a bit of community outreach in the past couple of years, that our citizen surveys have continually supported making changes to our current waste hauling system. So in starting to really look at this and what it would entail to actually implement a new organized system, staff has decided that we would really need some more capacity in terms of making that happen. So on July 30th, we put out just kind of an inquiry to consulting firms that do this type of work, asking them to really show us how they're experts in looking at the review of RFPs, the creation of RFPs, looking at market metrics and commodity pricing and things like that, that would be able to help us in analyzing the responses, as well as someone that is really an expert in how to design the community education and engagement. And when we say community, we really mean, you know, our residents that this would pertain to, as well as the waste haulers themselves and the businesses that work in this area. So the response was due by last Friday, and we received one submission. So a couple of the other firms that work in this area along the Front Range said they're busy, and they wouldn't be able to get to us for, you know, about six months, eight months or so. So that was a little disappointing, but staff's reviewing that submission now and to see if that firm is a viable option to help us move forward this project. So this is kind of a general potential timeline with kind of that first step, hiring a consulting firm that could help augment staff. We have put together a staff kind of working group of folks from utilities to think about billing and purchasing, Public Works, our communications team, obviously. So we've put that together, and we still feel that we would need some help in getting this to implementation. In this timeline, kind of generally, we would have ongoing community engagement with different points along the way that would really be key, those being before we put out an RFP, getting some more input from the public, which we will start tonight, and use some of our tools around that. Putting out an RFP, an ordinance needs to be passed, and all of that kind of culminating later this year. And then implementation not starting until January of 2020. For a community of our size, the estimation is that it might take four to six months to fully implement a change in this type of program. So this is a more detailed timeline, and these things can obviously be reordered. Staff has had lots of conversations about the order of this timeline. I know certain council members have weighed in and said it would make more sense to have an RFP first before getting into an ordinance. So this is a flexible timeline. This is a pretty aggressive timeline. Again, depending on the availability of consultant help and just how much time we really want to take to engage the community on those different pieces of this process will depend on what this timeline ultimately looks like. So kind of in the proposed how we would engage the public, this is diving a little bit deeper into what that timeline would look like. And then, again, we would use all of our tools in our toolkit of ways that we currently engage the community. Today, we just launched the same question that we'll ask the community here tonight on Speak Up Arvada. So if you can't be here tonight, you can certainly weigh in and answer the same question and start to collect that feedback. We would probably follow up with more questions to ask on Speak Up Arvada. We would use our social media tools. We would have in-person events in the form of open houses. We would utilize some of our existing outreach events, things like festivals coming up this spring, our Neighborhood Leader Network. Again, we have many organized neighborhood groups, whether they're formalized HOAs or just traditional neighborhoods, to engage with, and then as well, that hauler outreach and education as well. So to kind of dive a little bit further into each of those components of this timeline, and just to kind of set the stage... and just to kind of set the stage, there is a state statute that governs what local governments can do in the realm of waste hauling. And local governments can contract with, you know, multiple or single haulers, and many communities around the Front Range do do that. And these are just some of the things that are highlighted within that state statute. This really would apply to residential seven units or less. So, we're talking single-family, duplex, townhomes mostly would be included in this. So, commercial and multifamily dwellings would be excluded from the ordinance that we would create. So, just kind of pulling some preliminary numbers, we would obviously have to do more analysis and create some actual maps to show who would be included in the program before we would put the RFP out. But if we just looked at from our assessor data, single-family, duplex, and townhomes were at about 41,000 households of our total, about 46,000, 47,000 households as a community. Of those, we have 17,000 households that are in HOAs. But what we don't know is how many of those households are in an HOA that has a current contract. So, that's something else that we would need to determine through surveying of HOAs and asking to better understand of those 17,000, which households would be included in the program. And I have a slide about HOA specifically in a minute, but just to kind of answer the question of HOAs with a current waste hauling contract would have the opportunity to opt into the program. And, you know, as we've seen in some other communities, especially in Golden, it took a little while, but the HOAs ended up opting in because they got better services at better pricing. So, it also included in the state statute, there is a requirement that the haulers get a six-month notification that we're looking into to making changes to our ordinance. And then, again, there could be an option as part of the state statute for residents that wish to opt out of the program to still contract with whomever they choose to, but they would have kind of a base fee that they would pay for the additional services like bulky item pickup and yard waste and things like that. So, then, the ordinance is also a component to the timeline. A more robust ordinance than we have today would need to be passed. We do have an ordinance today that requires that haulers be licensed in the community and they pay a $25 fee. So, things that would be considered in an ordinance, accountability of the hauler, reporting requirements, so we could have more accurate data around how much tonnage is going to the landfill, how much tonnage is getting recycled, you know, collection requirements for days of the week and what should be collected. You know, again, the, you know, are we, you know, excluding HOAs would be included, service fees and any kind of unlawful acts and kind of recourse for folks today when folks call and say, "My waste didn't get picked up," or "My hauler went out of business," or "They ran over my mailbox." The city doesn't have a lot of recourse in what we can do through our current ordinance. So, these are kind of a list of things that could be included in an RFP. So, by no means are these are, you know, exactly what we would include. These are things we would really love to have more input from the community on, to sort of say, "What would make this successful for you and your household where you live in Arvada?" But these are some things we've looked at in terms of looking at best practices from other communities and then having the conversation as a staff. So, one thing would be kind of a six-year contract. This would really be because that first year is kind of a wash where it takes a while to implement and you wouldn't really have a lot of data that's accurate in that first year. And then, again, the number of households is something to be determined. The waste service would, this would be really just your straight trash pickup. We would want no less than once a week. And this would be on kind of a volume-based pricing model where you can choose what works for you and your household and really just pay for what you use. The recycling, we're proposing kind of an every other a week, twice a month. That is something we could ask the community to. I know we've heard from some that they say we'd rather, you know, have recycling every week as well. And then, kind of the compost, yard clippings, landscape, this can all kind of go in the same container, so all of your food waste and everything. We were kind of looking at this being an opt-in service. We could also have options where it could be, you know, during the summer months, it's included, but if you want to have just your kitchen waste in the winter months, it's optional and opt-in. So, there's lots of options around this. This is something we also get a lot of questions around, is there not a lot of place to take your leaves and branches and yard waste? We have a lot of large lots in Arvada, so that's something we've been hearing about. And then, obviously, for the included in the RFP would be kind of the schedule and routes that we would be asking for. Kind of the additional items, we would love to, again, provide the bulky item pickup that we've historically done every other year. So, by creating a more organized program, we could include in there, you know, twice-a-year bulky item pickup at the home that could, you know, be on a sliding scale of maybe it's quarterly, if that's something we really hear from the community. But rather than having everybody kind of save their bulky item pickup for two years and then we have these huge mountains of stuff, make sure that it's more on a rotating basis. And so, you would have, you know, a week and a day on your regular trash day would be bulky on a rotating basis throughout the community. The other thing that we heard from the haulers when we did the RFP a couple of years ago to do this, and all the haulers said, "We don't want to do that anymore," which is why we did something different, is they said, "We only have a few rear-loading trucks still in our fleet and there's no possible way to hit the whole city in a couple of weeks." And so, spreading that out throughout the whole year is something that we do feel would be preferable to the hauler. And then, we've, you know, we would want to have a pretty robust portion of the RFP around customer service and data tracking, making sure that the hauler would have a dedicated customer service line in person that's local for the city, so we don't have as much burden on staff taking those calls. And that could be kind of a dedicated city phone number that could go directly to the hauler to be able to answer those questions. And then, again, having some data, because right now, our current ordinance doesn't require any amount of data collection and reporting. So, just a little bit more on HOAs in terms of the RFP, we could exempt them and allow them to opt into the program if they already have a hauling contract. And we may hear through our outreach process that there's HOAs that have a hauling contract, but maybe it's up, or maybe they say, "This looks like, you know, a better situation for our community" and want to opt in right away. These next two slides under bins and billing are kind of still some unknowns, but at this point, kind of who purchases the bins is kind of up in the air. There is some advantage to the city purchasing the bins. Then, we own them and when we go out to proposal or bid the next time, that's not a cost that we essentially have to incur again. We've paid for the bins and we own them. We can brand them. There's some current grants out there that would only be available to local governments, but not to the private haulers. So, and then, the question has already come up around, "What do we do with all the bins we have in Arvada?" And so, other cities have explored that, kind of repurposing them or recycling them. So, just some things that are kind of on our radar as we dive into this. Similarly to billing, we've just kind of scratched the surface in terms of analyzing if the city can do the billing and what that would look like with our current water bills, where we have other things on there already, like wastewater and stormwater. This would be another line item on there for waste. And in other communities, the hauler kind of manages what size bin you have and what your rate is, and they provide kind of a spreadsheet upload to the city to integrate with our billing. So, it's an option and something that would need to be considered. We also, right now, bill for water on a bimonthly basis, so that would mean that waste would be billed on that, same kind of timeframe. So, just kind of looking at what staff would be needed, how this would be handled, how customer service would work. And then, there's also options where the hauling could, or the hauler could do the billing as well. So, this just kind of outlines some of the risks and challenges that I've kind of gone over, some of the unknowns. The other thing that could be included in the RFP, you know, and kind of weighed in with the community, is that a hauler could also essentially subcontract with other haulers to either provide a single type of service, whether that be the compost or recycling, or they could subcontract for certain areas of the city. So, that is something that has been discussed and I'm sure we'll get more input from the community around that. So, we've kind of gone over most of these. Just kind of wanted to show the depth and breadth of what this would really entail. So, at this point, before we move into public comment, we're seeking feedback from council. And then, before we move into public comment, we did just want to show everybody the list of questions of what we're going to be taking down while people come up to share their questions. And if folks have also written down their questions, that's helpful. But we're going to just be collecting them on a sheet like this in the background. And then, we also have our Speak Up Arvada site, which is live and current, and we're asking the same question there, and folks can weigh in on that site as well. So, just wanted everybody in the audience to see how we're going to capture the input this evening. And with that, I'll open it up to questions and comments from council.
Mr. McGough.
Yes, thank you. I have a question about, could you tell us cities that have implemented this type of system, you know, in our, in our state, in our area? And those who have implemented, those who have, are considering it now? And then, of course, one of the questions would be most important to me, will they be resources to us as we struggle with our issues moving ahead?
Sure. So, kind of close to us that have a kind of organized system, Golden does, Lafayette, Commerce City does in a little bit different way. The city essentially pays for the service. Then you have the cities that do it themselves, so that's Denver, Thornton, Loveland. Then there's cities that have very robust requirements and have kind of only a couple haulers in the market. That's kind of Fort Collins and Boulder's model. The city of Sheridan has a single hauler. Carbondale is currently looking at this. The city of Lakewood is currently looking at this. Westminster, in the past few years, has looked into the issue. And I would say they're definitely resources to us. They have been over the past several years as we've been doing community outreach on this issue. And there's, you know, even been at times kind of working groups of staff members from those communities that have gone through this and lessons learned. And so, as staff and our purchasing team have looked at what an RFP could entail, we're pulling the RFPs and ordinances from all of those other communities and talking with them and saying, "What would you have done differently if you had to do this over again?" And really learning from our peers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council at this point? Mr. Jones, you're next.
Just a couple of quick questions, not quick, but with regards to the consulting firm that you referenced, is it surprising to you that only one responded?
Not really with our quick timeline. So, I heard from three others that they would definitely be interested, but they just have too many projects going on currently. So, they were kind of like, "We could start this project later in the year."
And so, kind of in follow-up to that, is it really, do we really believe we need a consultant to manage through this? Mr. Devon?
Yes. This is a huge lift. And we're not staffed at the level of resources to be able to do this without consulting help. Jessica's responsible for many other, many other activities and programs and initiatives that we are implementing. The rest of us in the city manager's office are busy managing the city. This is a huge lift, especially under the tight timeline that council has expressed an interest in following. So, yes, there's no doubt about the fact that we are, that we are in need of a consultant to help us to implement this. And, you know, the advertisement that Jessica did to get the one consultant proposal is something that we're looking at, but we definitely need the consulting resources. There are a lot of issues and a lot of unknowns and risks that Jessica just summarized in this presentation, that without the help of a seasoned consultant who understands this process, we would not be able to implement.
Okay, no, thank you. You mentioned an opt-out provision. Does that mean that if I live on a particular street and everybody on my street opts in, I can opt out and hire my own trash service for my house only?
So, correct. So, that would be if you don't live in an HOA and you don't want to partake in the, you know, contracted program for the rest of the city because you just really like your waste hauler, or you have some special need, or you own a business and want to take your trash to your business, then you could opt out of the city's program and you would have to pay a base fee for some of those other services that the city would provide that would be outside of just the general weekly trash pickup. So, for example, in Golden, their rates are from $6 to $20, and you can certainly opt out, but you're still going to pay the $6 base fee to do that. And so, that's something we're talking about and, you know, is something where some cities have explored kind of an opt-in to the program, where you could run an RFP and say, "This is our preferred hauler for the community." The problem is you don't typically get as good a pricing because you're not giving that guaranteed number of households to the hauler. So, you're not going to get the same kind of efficiencies that you would if you say, "This is definitely how many we'll have."
Okay. And then, and maybe this is put in the cart before the horse, so I apologize, but let's pretend that we, the decision's made and we move forward with this. How many additional staff would be required to manage a program like this? I get that there's some questions around the billing and so on and so forth, but from a customer perspective, if the city's sponsoring some kind of trash hauling system, they're going to call the city like they would for a water issue or a streets issue, or they may even call us. And so, in fact, I know they will call us because they already are. So, what, what do you think the increase in staff would be and the number of calls per month? And maybe this is a question that goes in the RFP to ask current haulers, you know, how many, how many calls per day, per week, per month are they taking?
Right. Yeah, I think it's a, it's a great question. Kind of what we've heard from others and kind of upsizing from someplace like Lafayette that said, "This is what we require in customer service," and then kind of upscaling for our number of households, is that we would want a dedicated staff person on customer service from the waste hauling company. And we could really structure it where it's a city of Arvada number that you call and, you know, a straight pass-through to that customer service person on the hauler's side. And then, kind of on the backend side, if we were going to take on the billing, just kind of, you know, processing payments and uploading that and stuff. You know, it might be two, three staff members, depending on what that looks like. Golden says they use about 30% of one FTE and they have 4,400 households on their program. We'd be looking probably a ballpark of around 36,000 households. So, if you look at that amount of FTE time, that's what it may translate to.
Okay. All right, I think that's all my questions for right now.
Ms. Maria.
Thank you. Couple of questions, a couple, a couple of things you want direction on. So, timeline, I suggest it's better for us to get it right than get it fast. And so, be really careful with the timeline. Question I have for you, though, however, is on your timeline, it shows an ordinance in March. So, is that the decision point about whether we're going to organize recycling or organize trash hauling scheme? Or is that the time where, or is that just an ordinance that would enable it if we decided to enact it later? Or does the ordinance actually enact it?
I'm going to defer to our city attorney, who's been doing some research on this. Emily.
Emily Grog, Assistant City Attorney. The ordinance would be something that would go in place, but would have an effective date. What we had discussed when one of the possibilities was to do an ordinance first was to What we had discussed when one of the possibilities was to do an ordinance first, was to do an ordinance with the effective date being January 1st and then starting of 2020, and then doing the RFP process after we have the ordinance in place. There was some discussion that we may be able to get better rates, get better response from haulers if we have already the authority from council that we are going down that path. Obviously, if something was to change in that time, we could always change that, but that was one of our ideas for the timeline.
So we could also run the RFP first and have the ordinance will always be a little bit ahead of an actual contract with the hauler, but you could have those things be a little more concurrent later in the process and get the RFP information first. And so that's why I say our timeline is flexible and we're looking for input from you.
Yeah, if I could interrupt on that real quickly. My view on that is I need the information from the RFP before I vote yes or no. I have to have it before. I mean, it's just, you know, I can't go into this blind.
Yep.
Or to make a decision is to refer this to the citizens for an advisory question. I think people need to know answers to things before we make a decision. So go ahead, back to you.
So I was going to make the same comment. So on the timeline that you've got in here, I absolutely could not live with that. We would have to know exactly what this would entail and not entail, what it would cost, what it wouldn't cost, who it would impact, how it would impact them. And there's so many of those questions, so many potential options with this, which I'll get into here in just a minute. And there's absolutely no way that I'm walking across that threshold of saying, we're going to make this monumentous change to the city of Arvada and the city of Arvada's citizen lives without knowing all the information. So much like what the mayor said. So that'd be my advice on that part of the timeline, anyway, that if we do indeed enact this, one way or another, whether by council action or by advice from the citizens or whatever, that we don't put the cart before the horse, that we know what we're enacting before we enact it. So that's that. As far as the community engagement approach, I think, again, I'm going to say more is better. I think tonight's a good start in finding out kind of what some of our questions are, as well as from, I think, from our citizens. And we need more than probably just tonight and just to ask Arvada and just our community leaders, but we need even more of that to find out if they're willing to do this, what are the things that they would like to see? Because that'll develop all the potential options, whatever the scheme might be. So, you know, on those two questions, I would suggest that we relax a little bit on the breakneck pace of it. Let's make sure the ordinance is after we know exactly what we're voting on, and let's make sure the community engagement's good, again, with the thought about, let's get it right, not just get it, or not just get it fast, so let's get it right. So that brings me to the potential project components. So let me give you a couple, maybe questions. These may be statements as much as questions or maybe things to look into later. But one of the key components is whether HOAs are in this or not, in this. And so the question I would have is, do we have a good definition of what an HOA is and what size an HOA may be? And let me just give you an example. A few years ago, I sold a duplex that I owned in the city of Lakewood, and I sold it by selling the two sides separately. And we formed an HOA for those two sides to take care of their common interests. Is that an HOA that can then opt out of this trash scheme, or does that one not count?
So it would be HOAs that already have waste hauling contracts. So we would have to define what that means, but if those two duplexes or those eight duplexes had a contract with a waste hauler in place already, then they could, they would be exempt essentially from the program and would be able to opt in. But we have HOAs that are established HOAs that do not have, you know, a waste hauling contract. For example, Lake Harbor has an HOA, but they don't have a waste hauling contract, whereas other HOAs have a waste hauling contract in place.
Okay.
That's the number we don't know yet, is which have them and which don't.
Okay. So my question is, so I understand that, so if that duplex that I sold, who now has a little HOA, and they share trash service, so they have a contract, might be a month-to-month contract, but they have a contract with a hauler, they would be able to be out, but a HOA that doesn't provide that as part of the HOA services would be in the city program, does that HOA have the ability to opt out at a later date? In other words, say, look, we've gotten together as an HOA and through our common interests here, we have decided that we don't want to be in the city's program, we want to contract on our own for our HOA. Will they be able to do that? Or is it, once you've slipped into the city side, are you there forever?
I think that's something we have to determine in the ordinance, but if it's an opt-in approach and they decide for whatever reason, then they would be able to not opt in anymore and essentially opt out of the program.
By doing it, okay.
We would want to make it flexible for HOAs because we know they already have, many of them already have contracts in place.
Right, right, exactly.
Other cities require the HOAs to opt in after a certain amount of time, so they may say, at the end of your contract that you have in place, you're required to opt in. The initial feedback we've gotten from HOAs is, that doesn't feel as comfortable for Arvada as allowing them to opt in.
Right, right, okay. So when we had the Sustainability Committee here on December 10th, they gave a whole bunch of reasons why we should do this, why this is good for us. And one of the things that was a big deal was a thing called pricing equity, that, you know, it's not fair right now that some people paid more than others and some people pay less than others. Is that one of the cornerstones of why we would do this, or does that matter at this point? Or is that one of the goals of this? Where does that fall in this whole kind of scheme? And I'm not asking you to answer that now, but it's something I think we should think about, is where does that fall? Because if that's part of it, if that's what we're trying to accomplish here, one of the pillars we're trying to accomplish, seems to me like we almost have to make the HOAs be in the city, not opt out, because then that's how we get equity, both in price and in service. That, in other words, an HOA can't go get a better service at a lower price, or a worse service at a lower price, or same service at a higher price, or whatever, that there's equity. So I think that's a question that I would like to see answered through probably the public process, and I guess I want to hear the public weigh in on that about, how important is that for them, that this become equitable for everybody? The other part that we didn't mention here, I know we mentioned the city's part of this scheme would require recycling. If HOAs are allowed to continue their current service or not, are they also required to adopt into some kind of a recycling plan or have their haulers provide them? Again, it gets kind of that question of equity, and again, I'm not asking you necessarily to answer that right now. I'm more interested in probably hearing this from the community. Is this something that the community of Arvada feels like is an equitable question that they would want as part of this, is to require the same thing of everybody? So that's another one that I'd want to hear.
Somebody getting these questions down?
Yeah.
I assume we are.
I'm nodding and they're typing.
Okay, good.
Sorry. Couple more quick things, and I'll let one of my other fellow council members move on. And I think Mr. Jones kind of looked at this. I think we need to look carefully at the cost to the city. And that'll be based largely on what we decide to do, whatever we contractually decide to do, whether we decide we're going to bill for it or whether we decide we're not going to bill for it. If the hauler's going to bill for it, and the city then is just on the hook for kind of capturing service calls, there's certainly going to be some costs, but it won't be the same cost as if the city takes the responsibility for billing. And particularly, if the city were to decide to be the billing agency of this, and you mentioned it in your presentation, the billing on water bills, since we're already sending that bill out, we just add, you know, we've got water on there, we've got sewer on there, we've got storm drainage on there, that we just add another thing on there to do it. But, you know, the big lever there, the big hammer there is your water service. If you don't pay your bill, you know, the water gets turned off in general, you pay your bill right away because it's pretty inconvenient to not have water service.
Sounds like the voice of experience.
Yeah. My tenants have taught me well. But again, one of the questions I'd like to know is, is the city going to use that leverage of the water service to force people to pay their trash bill? You know, in other words, if your total monthly bill is $140 and somebody pays 80 of it, does that 80 go to trash first and storm second and sewer third? And you're short on your water bill, so we come and shut your water off because that's the lever that makes you pay? Or does a citizen have any ability to designate how that works? I guess I would just like to know more about how that would work and the appropriateness of the city being the collection agency, you know, using what leverage it has as a collection agency. So I'd want to see more about that. Last thing, you know, you talked about a, you know, plan within this where companies could sublease to other companies or subcontract to other companies to do part of the services or part of the area of town, or something like that. I would suggest that another way of kind of accomplishing that same thing would be for us to look into, either through our contractor or through our consultant or through us, to look into, you know, how many houses can a trash truck pick up? And I know there's a bunch of different sizes of trash trucks, there's big ones and little ones, but take the little trash truck or the common trash truck, common small trash truck. And how many houses, if they just stopped at every house, on average, could they pick up before they ran to the dump? Or how many could they do in a day, given they've got to run to the dump once or twice or whatever? And then rather than allowing somebody to control the whole city and dole out to subcontractors as they see fit or don't see fit, that instead, is it possible to have a scheme where we have multiple zones? And not one or two, but maybe six, or 10, or 22, or whatever, but zones that are about the size of a average trash truck? So that an independent company who's smaller than a big company has the same efficiencies at servicing that area as a larger company? And that these areas come up for bid on a kind of a rotating basis, so a company that's not in may be able to get in in this area. Or a company that's in can stay in there by continuing to offer the most competitive bid. And I guess I'd like to see something like that kind of looked into as a possibility of options in how we do that. And I guess I'd like to hear, too, how the residents would feel about something like that as well. I think it adds some market-driven forces to this type of a plan. So I would love to see that at least looked at or investigated. And then the last, very last thing, and I'll stop. In your presentation, you showed different sizes of trash cans and different rates based on how much you do or whatever. Looked into that a little bit, and it seems to me that in the places where they do that, the increments are artificial, that the, getting the truck to your house is the biggest cost. Getting the truck to your house with people in it is your biggest cost. The volume of trash you pick up and the dumping it in the landfill is not the biggest cost driver. But yet, the increments between the sizes seem to, you know, kind of double each time you go up, or there's some increment that's the same between all of them. And it seems really designed more around influencing people's behavior rather than picking up their trash. And I would think if that's part of any kind of a scheme we're going to do, I would want to see clearly the honest evaluation of that about what's the price increment for influencing people's behavior and what's the price increment that's the real price increment? And then whether it's the citizens that are going to make a choice like this, or whether it's the council that's going to make a choice like this, that we at least are making a clear choice on those factors, that we're not making a, that we don't just have one option in front of us, that that's an option that I think has to be there. So that'll be where I'm going to stop and let other people talk.
Super. Thank you for the feedback.
Yeah, I think that whole discussion of, you know, pay as you throw is social engineering. I mean, that's how it feels to me in terms of, and I know that Golden's doing some of that, and the mayor was beating me up because I've got 96-gallon containers and she's got much smaller ones. Ms. Ford, you are next.
Just based on what you just said as far as pay as you throw, I just want to bring up one point that I was just talking to our esteemed water engineer over, and that is the usage of water. And, you know, we can use that argument that when you have a townhouse, say, that you have one water tap and maybe you have five units in that one building. That is not a pay-as-you-throw system. It's actually similar to what our waste system is like now, because you are not incentivizing people to conserve water in that manner. You are actually paying the same rate that your neighbors are paying, but you may not be using the same water that your neighbors are using, but you're paying for their usage. And I personally like the concept of pay-as-you-throw because I feel that if you're producing a certain amount of waste, you should be paying for that waste that you're using, just as if you're using water, you know? I should be paying for the water that I'm using, not what, you know, some overall price that everyone's paying, but some people are using many more gallons than others. So, you know, we can look at that in a couple of different scenarios. As far as the council direction, for me, on the timeline, I too agree that I want to do it right. So I'm not in a major rush, even though I wanted to see this 10 years ago. But, and, you know, I really do want to get a community feedback because where I struggle as a non, you know, single-family dwelling, those of us who do recycle, we struggle with the cart size. And again, you know, we just talked about a project with one-car garages. This is a problem that I faced when we had the recycling. I think I've mentioned this to the committee many times. But, so, you know, for me, I would be, I would want to have some flexibility in our RFP that our citizens can, you know, get a size for their garage that is comfortable for them. Excuse me. We could never do a 96 or a 64-gallon cart in a one-car garage, especially when you're trying to park larger cars or, you know, a truck, whatever. The other thing is, there's two things about trash cans that concern me. One of them is, I have seen a lot of recycling blowing in the wind, and I would want to have that in the RFP. You know, maybe some way we could, the trash haulers could help residents on how to recycle and keep their bin closed during the tremendous windstorms that we have in this area, which is, you know, really problematic. Then the other thing that I would want to make sure of, too, is that, you know, if households had multiple trash cans, that we have some kind of a system where we're not adding to the burden of neighborhoods by having trash cans around the houses. So I think that that would be important. And other than that, I'm, you know, I'm pretty comfortable with the system, so I have really no more to add as far as that. And, you know, I hope we get good feedback. I'm looking for good feedback.
Ms. Pfeifer?
Thank you, Mayor. So when we talk about equity, and I look at it more at affordability, I think, more than anything. This leads into, you know, I think we all talked about it, but most major cities, at least since I was a kid, has always done this. The city's always done, in fact, I think it's this last time, where they used to go to the side of the house and get the trash. It was the Cadillac service. But when we talk about equity and affordability, I think what I would like to see out of it is affordability. It should be lower than what we're paying, and it should be lower than what the HOAs are paying as a group. And if you bring $41,000 or $30,000 or $20,000, I'd be shocked if I'm paying more than $8 per house. And, you know, because I pay that now on an HOA of 113, and I get recycling. And, you know, because I pay that now on an HOA of 113, and I get recycling. So 857 to be exact. So, you know, keep that in mind when we bench ourselves. And somebody comes and says, "Well, I gotta do it for 20 bucks," you know. So I think at the end of the day, what will persuade me is, is it less than what I'm paying today? Because when it boils down to it, it's what's in your pocketbook. That's going to be the first thing I think folks are going to look at. The second thing is, is I think that if it's affordable, it helps our community in several ways. One is folks that can't afford it, and I know it sounds like 20 bucks or 30 bucks or 40 bucks or whatever they're paying can be an issue. It does for our more senior population or at-risk population may not be able to afford it. And then in return, we have a hoarding situation, which I know we've had a couple of those, and we've had very tragic situations that incur, you know, people tide over. So when you look at it, it's a public health issue. We need to encourage that at least the waste is moving. And I think it is our duty to make sure it leaves our community and does not create rats, which if you go on Nextdoor, you're hearing about rats coming into Arvada. It, you know, creates all sorts of other issues that I think that this is a good way to get, to help encourage if it's affordable, it's a way to encourage folks to just get rid of the trash on their property. That's first and foremost. And then if, I almost believe that in this process, I'm not sure, I know it's exciting to go straight from trash and recycle and composting and all of boil the ocean. I'm almost thinking, I feel, let's just go back to basics a little bit more and do trash and recycling, and let's just start there, and then we can add things later and discuss it with our community. I think if you go in there, you know, maybe Denver gets composting, but I can't, I don't even know how many people compost, other than in your backyard, how many people actually compost with a waste hauler. So I think it gets confusing on when do I put out trash leaves? When do I put out this? When do I get, you know, large item picks up? We just gotta, let's simplify it. Let's get back down to kiss and just keep it simple. I also bringing up the, be aware that when we discuss, and I'm sure there's a lot of rules and laws around this, but the ADA and the senior population, you know, I know a few of us got a few phone calls about this. But, you know, and there's an option where they just said, "Look, I can carry my trash bag. I can't take the actual container." "Can I just put the bag out on the curb?" And will they take it? It's those kinds of things that we've got to think about as well in this discussion. The other thing, I do agree that with John about the multiple providers, but I worry about if there's too many of them because you know that, it's funny to hear that so-and-so bought so-and-so bought so-and-so bought so, and it's constantly happening. It's constantly happening. And so I think of, when we talk about the burden on staff and burden on our billing, I'm thinking, holy cow, if I have 11, 20 providers to deal with, and I get complaint, I think my complaints will triple. And then I got to figure out that, well, this so-and-so bought so-and-so, now is that so-and-so, now he's been on this block but not that. I think that's going to put more burden on our staff, and I'd be afraid to go that far. But I do, I do think that there's a happy medium of what our thresholds could take. Like, what is our mental capacity and resource capacity that we can handle and do an effective and efficient job at it? You know, so keep that in mind when you're going through it. You know, maybe it's four, maybe it's six, I don't know. And subcontracting is not a bad idea. I think that's good. I did like, I think you might have said it earlier, but maybe some points for including more people that are subcontracted or some scoring that might encourage, you know, inclusivity as much as we can. So keep that in mind when we go through. I think it'd be a little bit harder. And the staff, you know, three folks doing, I'm not too concerned about three folks doing. I think we have the system, the framework set up. So it should, maybe it's not even three people. At the end of the day, when you get into it, it might not be if the framework is there and it's some automation. I'm sure our IT department can figure out automation and APIs and all fun jazz and make it more automated and less burden on our staff. So definitely try to pursue options of minimizing impact to staff. And the businesses was one that popped in, but you answered that question. I think the businesses may be interested in it, but again, let's maybe keep it simple for right now. And then maybe they could come in at another time, once we get more foundation underneath our feet and we can understand it, if we were to continue down this path. As far as the timeline, yeah, I'm a little leery about the ordinance coming up too quick like that without us knowing. It's, I don't, I know we can always change our mind, right? I mean, we can. But in the vein of trying to encourage the industry to come back and give us information, this goes into my RFI versus RFP kind of discussion. But I think I'm fine with it, other than the ordinance. I think we need to probably hold off on it. Community engagement, absolutely, community engagement. You know, the conversations I've been having have been, it's interesting, they'll say either yes or no, but let's just start with the ones that say no. But after you have the conversation, you find out why they're saying no, and it's all over the board. The one lady that I think talked to a few of us was, she just said no because she was concerned with carrying her trash bag to the curb and she wasn't allowed to. That was the only reason she was saying no, is because she finally found somebody that would do it, and she's afraid that'll be taken away. And she's taking care of her husband, and they're in their 80s. So that's something that to keep in mind. For potential projects, I think that's all I have. I think I'm good there.
Very good. Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I agree 100% with everything that Mr. Pfeiffer said.
Thank you very much.
And there it is. High five you. Nice job. Well said. I just have one more thing, sir. So I do agree that the RFP should be before the ordinance, because we do want to know what we're voting on. And we are taking the time to get it right. I feel like there's a ton of conversation about rushing the timeline, rushing the timeline, rushing the timeline. I look to take us back a year ago when we started talking about this, and we didn't get a workshop for a full year because we wanted to do community engagement, education, survey for a full year. We did that. So we keep talking about rushing the timeline, rushing the timeline. And I agree, we need to do more community engagement, more outreach and more education. The more input we get, the better, everywhere from online to phone calls. I'm happy to make some. In the Arvada report, everywhere, a page in the water bill, everywhere that we can possibly engage our community, let's engage them. And then I also agree, Mr. Pfeiffer, with starting simple with that RFP with trash and recycle and not completely overwhelming people and making that cost go up. If we get that cost down in the initial RFP, then we're going to see a lot more support in that. Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Thank you for the second bite at the apple, because I didn't really answer the questions. So, but also, before I answer the questions, I want to just ask Ms. Ford a follow-up on a couple of things that you stated with regards to trash can lids. Because I got an email or a phone call or something from someone that was concerned about, you know, what this might look like and shared an experience that they were penalized for not having their trash can lids closed. And if their trash can lids weren't closed, their trash wasn't picked up. Is that what you're saying?
Oh, no. I was just saying, because when the wind blows, sometimes if you ever observe some people's trash, you know, it's packed in a certain way that the lid flies open, and then if they have papers and things, they're flying out.
So you've been up to my neighborhood?
Well, I don't live in your neighborhood, but believe me, the wind blows in mine too.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because it sounded like you were saying that that was part of the, that was a question in the RFP?
No.
Okay.
Well, no, well, I just wanted to see, my thought was if there's more recycling being done, that we have the potential for more litter caused by the wind and people not, you know, people forgetting that we do have this wind and leaving things in a way that it just, you know, in the air, so.
Yeah, no, I think that's citywide. I guess I was hoping, I was, I'm glad, I guess, to hear you say you're not suggesting that that's a condition that a waste hauler would put on the residents, that if your trash can lids not closed, you can wait till next week. So, okay. And then the other thing that you mentioned about having trash cans around your houses, what was your, I wasn't tracking with what you meant with that.
Well, I believe, I believe our ordinance today is that you're supposed to put your trash cans away, right? Mr. Attorney, Mr. Daley?
So, yeah, so they're supposed to be behind the front essentially line of the house. So they can certainly be on the side of the house, but they shouldn't be sitting, you know, in front of your front door on your front porch or in right in front of your garage. They should be either behind the house, the side of the house, or within the garage.
Right. And so my only comment was that if, say, we did, say a person wanted to do, you know, recycling and they wanted to do the green waste and maybe the composting or whatever, now you're talking about several bins. So I would want to make sure that, you know, our ordinance would be effective so that people would have places to put those bins and that it wouldn't become a sight now that we're doing this. And I don't know if that's even been a problem in other cities, but I'm just thinking of our city. I would like to make sure that our city remains clean-looking.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make sure I understood exactly what you're saying. So with regards to the timeline, I would agree with Mr. Marriott 100% in what he said. With regards to community engagement, I would again argue that more is better. Unfortunately, Facebook and Nextdoor and all of the social media outlets, people tend to have opinions about what we are doing or what we aren't doing. And what I've seen is a lot of misinformation from people making comments about the cities making a decision. So I applaud the fact that we're taking a very proactive approach. And I would just encourage citizens to look to the city for your answers as opposed to something that might be posted on Facebook or Nextdoor or some other thing. Because I've seen lots of strings of conversations around it that are just not very productive and...
Or very accurate.
Yeah, and that's the bigger thing, is that there's a lot of inaccuracies around comments that people are making. So I think the community engagement is critical, and it shouldn't stop at any given point in time. I think you would agree. I also have gotten some feedback with regard to people who, all of a sudden, this has become, this has risen to some level of understanding. And it wasn't because they're on Facebook or Nextdoor or they even read the Arvada report. Their neighbor told them. And so how do we reach those people? And maybe they didn't go to Sand in the City or whatever it was where we had our sustainability committee. I mean, they were at, I don't know how many countless events. But still, you know, again, making sure that we're hearing the voice of that person who's not using social media or going to any of these community events. And then as far as potential project components, I think most of what's been said tonight is critical. I've gotten some, a couple of emails that I'll forward along to staff that are some additional questions that definitely should be asked then answered.
Super. We'll definitely add them in.
Great. Okay, you've heard my, when I interrupted John, you heard my thoughts on the timeline. I think we really do have to do the request for proposal before we try to do either an ordinance or a vote. Community engagement, 100%, we need to be doing it, and we're going to be hearing from some folks here very quickly. And then potential project components, I think we need to get the questions answered before we can really say what the components are going to be. In terms of questions I have that I think we have to look at, if you go back to like your fourth or fifth, your fourth slide, why consider change? We need to answer these questions of, is it going to lower the cost to residents? Is it going to decrease road damage and to what extent? You know, these are all, you know, we're sort of jumping to the conclusion that these are absolutes. I want documentation. I want numbers that tell me how much damage is caused to the roads by multiple trucks on it. I want to know how much are we going to decrease the noise nuisance and air pollution? I don't just want anecdotal. I want facts. I, you know, this thought of providing additional services, I totally agree. Let's keep it simple for now. And do we have statistics from our police department in terms of accidents that have happened with trash trucks? Now, I can tell you, I once backed into a trash truck, so I know it can happen. You would think it'd be big enough that I would miss it, but I didn't. And then, you know, for me, the, you know, improving on our recycling rates, I see that happening. But again, documentation from other communities in terms of how much of an improvement it's made. So those are the questions I need to have answered. Now let's hear what our citizens have to say.
Perfect.
And I want to thank Cindy Kreiser. She did a great job of giving us some questions. And the first questions that are on the list up there that were put on, and I'm just going to go through them. Who will be managing billing and customer service, the hauler or city staff? Can people choose what services they want? Will a new hauler be asked to resurrect the biannual large item pickup? Will hauler provide recycle bins? Do they have adequate inventory to distribute to the whole city? Will hauler collect outdoor yard waste, tree branches, et cetera? How will a hauler be held accountable for providing the highest level of service? Does any single hauler have the capacity to serve the entire city? Are there enough added benefits to justify creating a monopoly on trash pickup? And can residents choose to opt out and use any hauler they prefer? Great questions. And next I'll call, or actually, Mindy Moore indicated she didn't want to speak but had a question. Will multiple contracts be awarded, split the city into districts or areas? If so, please ensure that the contracts are identical so all areas of the city have the same access to services and the same rate structure, et cetera. Another great question, I look at it compared to TDS cable service versus what the rest of you guys have in the city. And I can tell you, those of us who have the worst service really suffer because of it. Ted Pinkerbrook or Breck, you say you have suggestions. We're looking for questions tonight. So if you've got a question you'd like to ask?
I thought I noticed some items that you were looking for suggestions too. But my biggest question is, is why are we making something that's really pretty simple into a very difficult thing? So I guess my comments will have to come back another time because I have some suggestions that I think is pretty simple.
And if you want to email them to us, that'd be great, or however you'd like to get them to us, okay?
Okay, you got it.
You bet. Great. Janet Prin?
First of all, I want to thank all of you members of the city council for putting so much thought and time into coming up with all of the answers that, all of the questions and answers that you came up with tonight. Because in 2011, I was really sorry to see that it just all disappeared.
We didn't do it well then. I agree.
But it's very impressive, I'm very impressed as a citizen. And my biggest concern, and it's probably because I was on Nextdoor too much, but my biggest concern was the people that did not want to be part of the city one-hauler system. And I was very pleased to hear that you bumped with this opt-out option and so that there won't be a lot of, hopefully, a lot of problems in that area.
So your questions about the opt-out?
My question isn't about it. My question, I was going to, I didn't know you'd come up with that. And my question, I was going to say, what would some of the options be for people who don't want to be in the system? And you've already come up with something.
Great.
So I didn't know about it.
Great.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Gerald Sampson?
I'll be able to keep this real short because I was really making a comment more than a question. So I'm in full support of this effort, and I think there's been a lot of good questions raised, and I think I've gotten most of the answers that I was looking for. So that was really good.
Good. Well, we've got a lot more answers we're still going to need, but I think we do have some good questions. Don Gilman?
No comments about the short guys.
Okay, no problem.
I thought I was going to be first. You pulled me up just to show me off, but that's okay. Thank you for the opportunity. I want to take a moment to just acknowledge David Jones and Dot Miller and Mark McGrath because I've spoken to all of you. No, it was Bob Pfeiffer. I apologize, Mark. And in particular, David, I caught him with his cell phone walking out of King Supers with armloads of groceries. And this is a dedicated public servant. Make no doubt about it. The man stopped and talked to me for 15 minutes and fielded my questions. That said, I have a couple of questions for you, and they're... That said, I have a couple of questions for you and they're really in front of you, Mr. Williams. Couple of the motivational or justifiable reasons for doing this. And I'm not necessarily sure that I believe that what we're dealing with here is an answer looking for an issue. But the claimed economic values as compared to homeowner association rates, I don't know that the Sustainability Council determined, or even if staff knows, but are those homeowners' association in any way subsidizing the costs of that trash collection? Those are some really remarkable numbers. Eight dollars a month?
I negotiated ours directly.
With whom, sir?
I don't want to say. We have some friends in the room. We have other trash haulers, but they're not in here right now, I don't think.
Okay. Well, I would presume that that information is largely proprietary. And I don't know if it's generally available to anybody, but the question is simply this. A homeowners' association assesses a certain cost to be a member of the homeowners' association and do they devote a portion of that to subsidizing trash collection rates?
That's a good question.
Well, could I just answer for my HOA, sir?
Sure.
My HOA has 252 units and so we do pay eight dollars a month, but it is my understanding that the reason why we do pay eight dollars is because of the quantity of trash that gets picked up in a very small area. And I can tell you that my HOA does not subsidize.
Well, I'm glad to hear that because I looked at some of the numbers that were cited as economic justification for this proposal and it made me wonder. The second question is one with regard to the question of road damage. And I wondered out loud, and I mentioned this to Mr. Jones when we spoke, trash trucks come in a variety of sizes and weights and if you look at the gross vehicle weight of the thing, some of them carry quite a bit of weight. But those very same roads are used daily, multiple times daily by FedEx, UPS, DHL. Amazon has its own private contractor and in the world we live in now where everybody sits on their tukus and orders up everything they can on the internet and it gets delivered to their front door and hope it doesn't get stolen, those same trucks are beating the heck out of our roads, guys. So how do you reconcile? We don't want that many trash trucks in the city, but we're going to open the doors to every other kind of vehicle. That's one that I don't know there's an answer to. And I'll close with a couple of comments and I am very...
And seriously, I don't want comments tonight.
I understand.
I want just your questions, so I thank you for your comments.
Very good. I will leave it at that.
Very good. We will have other opportunities for...
Those questions, we'll have an opportunity to kind of answer.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Judy Douglas did not wish to speak, but has a question with regard to considering employment practices of any RFP for trash hauling and the employer benefits, fair compensation, overtime, et cetera. So they want us, she would like us to look into, you know, as we look at RFPs, those kinds of issues. And Brandon, sorry, Brandon, I can't read your last name. And you didn't wish to speak, but you indicated, well, first of all, you support it, but no specific question. Rachel Smallwood. Good evening, Rachel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for exploring this option and for accepting public comments tonight. This was a fun change of pace. So I have a few questions. The first is, the first couple are regarding the timeline. So the first one is, would it really push the timeline back too far if we were to hold one town hall on the topic that I imagine would last all night long? Because I think that would be a benefit to the community to have a chance to have like a more of an interactive opportunity to ask questions and hear answers. Also, if we're reviewing the one consultant that we've heard from on the RFP and we don't see any red flags, is there really any reason to significantly hold back on the timeline to wait for another consultant that is going to be eight months down the road? Also, can we direct staff to brainstorm ideas for ways to make this as pro-job as possible? For example, is it possible to prioritize haulers that pay and treat their employees well, sort of like the timeline of Judy Douglas? Or if not, what else can we do to think in that line of thought? And also, is there a point at which if we break down into smaller and smaller zones, we lose the cost benefit? Like if we have 11 zones, will the trash haulers all of a sudden say that's not as much worth it? We're going to bump the prices up? And if that's so, then at what point do we lose that cost benefit? Where's that balance? So that's it. Thank you.
Those are good questions. That's all I had signed up. Does anybody else have any questions for us tonight? Yes, if you'll come down. Just line up at the podium here and tell us your name and ask your questions and we will add them to our list and all the others we're going to get. Good evening.
Good evening. It's very, I was very happy to hear all the good questions that have already been presented. And mine is really more basic. I've only been in Arvada two years and I came from a place out of state that had a citywide system where you put out your container and a truck came along with some sort of a lift arrangement that raised the container and dumped the contents into the body of the truck. Is that what we are talking about here? And what do we have now and what will we get in the future? Will it be something like that or is it something more basic? Is there human labor involved in lifting tents?
It varies by trash haulers.
Really?
Yeah, there's some that use the system you talked about, the lift and dump, and then there's others that still have folks on the back of the truck dumping the trash in. So that, I think that'll come up with the RFP in terms of the efficiencies and things of that nature. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Randy Mormon on the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee and also want to express my appreciation for the time and thought you've put into this topic tonight. Mike, I had two questions and I think the first one you've addressed and that was around the timing and I share your concerns that were expressed about putting the ordinance first. I think we're going to have a serious debate about it. We need to have all the facts on the table, so I would really like the RFP to precede that so we can actually talk about real numbers and pricing. My second question, though, is related to pricing and I know we hear a lot of concerns about price increases. We hear that currently among residents saying that their haulers are increasing their prices and having to switch, constantly switch haulers. And then I think we're also going to hear the argument that if we go into the system, prices will increase over time as well. And so I know that other communities, and my question is that if you would consider this in putting it in the RFP, is that we ask for a price lock in the first two years and then allow price increases to go according to the CPI? And that seems to be a fair way to address the increase in costs that haulers face over time, but also assures the community that they're not going to skyrocket over time and that being a reason for not doing this. So I just appreciate you considering that.
Great. Good questions. Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Ms. Pfeiffer's got a question back for you.
You know, that's a good point because when I negotiated ours, they wanted not two years, but every year there was an increase. If we do one year, where's Jessica, where did she go? Oh, she's talking to somebody. I'm talking to you, Jessica.
I'm just trying to connect with the question.
If we do one-year intervals or one year with five renewals, I mean, doesn't that kind of play in? Because I think the industry would have a little concern around, because you'd have to do a five-year agreement or something for that to be, I think, beneficial to the trash hauler.
So even if we had a multi-year agreement, there would still be built in, you know, inflationary increases. And so I believe what Randy's asking for is to make sure that that first two years, there's no inflationary increase. And then beyond that, then it would be related to the consumer price index.
But no risk of saying, oh, we're done playing, we're going to go with somebody else and they're in year two and then it resets and, you know, they kind of, kind of made the price low to get in. I just, I think we need to be thoughtful around what that may look like and how does that play out to be fair to everybody.
Right. When we've looked at other communities, they're going with about a five-year contract and that seems to be working pretty well.
Bless you. And then every year it's looked at and reviewed if you should continue or not?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Jones?
Just a quick question, and I don't know if this, Jessica, sorry, if this is an easy question to ask or how we would even answer it, but to Mr. Pfeiffer's comment about what he pays for services, can we ask a question or where would we ask the question to get feedback from citizens about what they're currently paying so that as we're gauging, you know, costs, how does that really play out to the community?
It's certainly a question we can ask. It's one that we have asked as we've been doing outreach. And we specifically did outreach to HOA and non-HOA to glean some of that price differential. But it's certainly something we could ask in surveying and as part of our outreach.
I think it's just another data point.
To have more information, yeah.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Good. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Christina Manuel. I appreciate all of your time tonight. My question is, I know that some of you have stated that with this new program, that you'd want to kind of take it as a baby step, just do trash and recycling, maybe put off the composting or tree limbs and leaves and things like that for later on down the road. And my question is kind of why? We have a lot of good examples in our neighboring communities like Lafayette and Golden. There's plenty of communities around the world, New Zealand, for example, Belgium for another one, that already do this kind of thing. And I see Arvada as a community that really wants to protect where we're going, like with your meeting earlier about being concerned about parking spaces, about being concerned with transportation. Why aren't you asking about solar panels? You know, if we're going to do this, go big or go home. You know, you're already extending the timeline. Isn't that enough time to add one more component? And with your point, Ms. Ford, about all of the bins, I have a family of four. We produce a lot more recycling garbage than we produce like trash garbage. In my ideal world, I would have a recycling bin twice as big as my trash bin and maybe a compost bin the same size as my trash bin. So I understand your concern about the bin size, but why can't we have a lot of variety?
So that's, well, I think that's an appropriate question to ask, is how much more work will it be to do some of those additional services and also then the, so that we have the menu of options and cost options? Have we covered it? Yes, sir.
I apologize. Thank you very much, Council. Anthony Nuccio. I actually just have kind of two questions that I'd kind of like to see possibly addressed through the RFP process. As I had a boss once many years ago say, a contract is only good for one thing, divorce. So I'd be kind of curious how we could go about handling through the RFP process. Those folks that aren't in an HOA are paying for their own trash services. Maybe they've just moved to the community, they've already signed a three-year agreement with somebody. How are they going to, how is that going to be handled or does that just have to be handled on an individual basis? Similarly, let's say, you know, because to get the rates, we probably have to do it, enter into a multi-year contract, having lived in an HOA once upon a time and gone through that same sort of negotiation process, I've seen both sides of this. So what I would like to know is, or at least working into that process, if at year four or year three, that contractor gets bought by somebody and all of a sudden the service is no longer what it used to be, what sort of repercussions, what sort of leverage does the city have to work on that? I'm sure that's probably an obvious one for the staff and whatnot, but still I figured it should be.
Great, great, great question.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, does that cover it for everybody? You know, I want to thank you all for being here tonight and sitting through a long meeting, but also for your thoughtful questions, your attentiveness and your willing to, willingness to give us those questions so that we can really beef this up right. And I think we do want to get it right. And so I think that tonight was a great, great start in terms of taking us down that pathway. So with that, we have an opportunity for further public comment on something other than trash hauling. We've talked trash enough tonight. So any other topics that, that I'm going to have to listen to, you know, someone else wanting to talk about how great the Patriots are and that is truly trash talk. Okay. Any reports from council? None tonight. Mr. Devon?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, the next workshop we will have is actually not going to be until March 25th because the February 25th date will be an interview for boards and commission applicants. And then the workshop date after that will be, is canceled because of the National League of Cities Conference. So next workshop is March 25th. We'll see a land development code update and an update on Arvada economic development.
Very good. Mr. Daley? We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.